To the Monday, June 14th Bennington Select Board Meeting. I'm Jeanne Jenkins, I'm Chair of this Board. And I'm going to ask all of my fellow Board members to unmute themselves and introduce themselves, starting with Bruce.
Good evening, everybody. This is Bruce Lee Clark. Welcome to the meeting.
Good evening. This is Garrett Corey.
Hello, everyone. Jean Connor.
Hi, everybody. It's Jim Carroll.
Hi, Sarah Perrin.
Hello, everyone. Tom Haley.
Great. Thank you very much. Also with us tonight, we have Stu Hurd, who's the Bennington Town Manager. We have Dan Monks, Assistant Town Manager. Shannon Barsati, who is the Community Development Director. We have Josh Boucher from CAT TV. Nancy Lively, who always takes wonderful minutes for us. And several special guests. We have, I see Megan Harrington, who is from, is the District Director of the Department of Health in Bennington. Trey Dobson is joining us, who's the Chief Medical Officer at Southwest Vermont Medical Center. We have Derek Chomings from Alliance for Community Transformation is joining us. And she will be, she will be introducing a team of middle school youth who have presentation for us. And we also will have with us tonight for the Recovery Housing Discussion, Stephanie Lane from Shire's Housing, Ralph Bennett from Turning Point, John Rogers from Vermont Foundation of Recovery and Mission City Church, and Alex Figaroa from Southwest Vermont Medical Center. So now, I get to read for the very last time, the pandemic statement. And as I read that, our technical wizard, Dan Monks, is going to put the information on how to watch or join the meeting up on the screen. So, "Due to the COVID-19 pandemic state of emergency declared by Governor Scott, and pursuant to Addendum 6 to Executive Order 1-20 Act 92, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. There is no physical location to attend this meeting." In order to view the meeting, you can do that most easily on CAT TV, Channel 1085, or go to CAT TV Facebook Live. If you would like to participate in the meeting, you can join as an attendee at the Zoom link that's listed there. You can also get to this by going to the town website and clicking on the Select Board tab. You can also dial in. And if you want to dial in, you should dial 1-646-558-8656 with the meeting ID code of 894-48782346. Attendees can view the meeting but must be recognized to speak. If you are on the Zoom call, you can raise your hand, you can push the Raise Hand function, and then we will recognize, we'll recognize you. If you are on telephone, you will need to press *9 in order to get the Raise Hand function to work. And then when you are called on, please press *6 to unmute yourself. Anyone speaking will need to clearly state their true full name and residence. The call-in information will be periodically posted on the screen, and the process for calling in will be explained. If technology fails us, the meeting will be continued at a time and place to be determined, and all votes that are not unanimous will be done with a roll call vote in accordance with the law. Thank you. All right, so first up tonight, we have the reading of the vision statement. Jean, would you please do that? That reminds us why we are here.
Sure. Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you very much. Our next order of business is the Consent Agenda. So the Consent Agenda tonight includes executive session minutes from May 10th and June 7th, and then our meeting minutes from May 24th. We also have the warrants circulated, and we have a proclamation on Bennington's designation as the newest Appalachian Trail community. For the purposes of discussion, do I have a motion to accept the Consent Agenda?
I move.
Thank you. A second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All right, so I'm going to start with the, the minutes and warrants, and then I'm going to ask Jean to read the proclamation when we get to that. If anyone has any questions that haven't been answered by the Town Manager already on the warrants, or any corrections on the minutes that should go to Nancy Lively, now is the perfect time to do that. Anyone have any corrections or comments? Okay, I have one on line 363. It should say rec, as in recreation, as opposed to red. And that's on the minutes of May 24th. All right, and then, so what I'd like to do, no other comments? Okay, what I'd like to do is have Jean, ask Jean to read the Appalachian Trail Proclamation. There was a wonderful celebration over Zoom on June 3rd that was complete with history of the trail, history of the long trail, stories from through hikers, keynote from Congressman Peter Welch, and several of us were in attendance. I said a few words as well. This is really an honor for our community. At the ceremony, I did a ceremonial signing. So the proclamation is dated, on the date that we did that, that ceremony. But what I indicated at the time was that that was a ceremonial signing, and that I really wanted the full Select Board to, you know, to endorse this. So Jean, on to you.
Sure. Whereas Appalachian Trail founder Benton McKay's vision included opportunities for recreation, recuperation, and employment through a series of recreational communities throughout the Appalachian chain, to be connected by a walking trail. And whereas, communities along the Appalachian Trail corridor are important partners for the sustainability of the trail and its corridor for an estimated 4 million visitors annually. And whereas, an outstanding recreational trail, scenic overlooks, and remote wilderness areas present opportunities to attract visitors to Appalachian, to Appalachian Trail communities from around the world. And whereas, this designation will act as a catalyst to growing an outdoor economy to engage community residents as trail users, stewards, and supporters, and to elevate the visibility of the trail as a resource and local asset. And whereas, Bennington's sense of place and the protection of the cultural, historical, and natural assets in the Appalachian Mountain region can benefit through the use of resources such as signage, communications, and new partnerships. And whereas, Bennington has been recognized and designated as an Appalachian Trail community, and desire to continue their efforts to support this effort for no fewer than five years. Now, therefore, we, Select Board Chair Jeanne Jenkins and ATC Regional Director Hawk Matheny do hereby proclaim that Bennington accept the designation as an Appalachian Trail community and urge the citizens to support the Appalachian Trail through appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies. In witness thereof, we hereunto set our hand this third day of June 2021.
Thank you, Jean. So I do want to say that this was done with a lot of hard work. And Sylvia Casano, and Jonah Spivak, and Shannon Barsati from the town, along with the members of the Green Mountain Club, really put in an amazing amount of work to, to make this happen. And already, we're seeing through hikers coming through. I think you're seeing, you're seeing hikers hike into town and back. So I would love now to vote on accepting. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that people are aware, because I wasn't, that this doesn't just happen. You know, there's a lot of hoops that the town has to jump through, and a lot of criteria that the town had to meet. It's not just that they picked towns that happened to be along the Appalachian Trail, and they're all designated to be one of these communities. It's, it really is a big deal. And I, I have a whole new appreciation for that process after attending the ceremony.
Thank you. All right, so can we vote on the Consent Agenda? All in favor of accepting the, of accepting the Consent Agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? All right, thank you so much. That's wonderful. All right, next up, we have Dr. Trey Dobson and Megan Harrington to give us what I hope is really good COVID news. And I do want to thank Trey for taking the time to really explain the changing landscape to us earlier, earlier today, and also just making sure that we're all going to be safe. And, you know, we truly appreciate both what you, Trey, and what you, Megan, have done for us during this, during this whole period of time. So please take it away.
Great. Megan, why don't you start?
Very sure. There was wonderful news today, for those who got to listen to the Governor's press announcement that the state of Vermont did reach 80% of those 12-plus who are eligible have received their first dose of vaccine. So the huge, huge milestone, big push right there at the end. I don't know if people saw the numbers over the weekend, but it was, you know, 332 to go, 280 to go. And, you know, it's right when you're at the end there, when everyone really, really does that push. So such, such exciting news. Me and some colleagues in the office today were just reminiscing. It was almost a year ago today that we were setting up testing, you know, in 85-degree weather, not really knowing what the next year had in store for us. So it's pretty remarkable to be here right now with that news, and just really kind of embellishing in that. I, I have stats, I have numbers, but, you know, I don't know. I just feel like I'm enjoying it right now. I was able to look, not to be a downer on that very good news, but I did see that Bennington is actually at 75.6% of eligible folks have been vaccinated. So I would charge everyone in the county to kind of push for that last 4%, get the county at 80%, too. Just my, just my little spin there. But Dr. Dobson, you want to jump in there? I'm just feeling like I'm blowing.
That was great. You know, I think some of the things that, that we've seen recently, like when I say recently, looking at the last 21 to 28 days around the country, is remarkable, and that is, again, the positive effect the vaccine has. And, you know, unfortunately, it really is going to create for the next six months, call it what you want, the haves and the have-nots, the willings and the unwillingness. The risk of COVID-19 remains high. I wouldn't say very high, it depends where you're located, but high. Even in, in the Northeast, it's probably moderate in Vermont when you talk about unvaccinated people. And that will actually increase in the fall and winters. So getting those unvaccinated people vaccinated is really important. When we look at the great success we've had, and importantly so, it's in the older population. So what's going to happen this fall and winter? It's going to be really tough in school systems where they have 50% or less of the, the children vaccinated, you know, that are actually eligible, you know, that will be eligible but not willing to make that next step. It makes it incredibly inefficient. I'm, I'm optimistic, but I'm concerned that we will have another semester of lots of confusion, decreased advancement of students, all because of inefficiencies that are created by having different categories of everything from going to the cafeteria to, you know, just teaching a lesson, to the fact that some will get sick and go out. So we know that, we know that in public school systems, it's very difficult to mandate vaccine, that's unlikely to happen. So therefore, it's just continuing to encourage people to vaccinate. That being said, the flip, and I know Jeanne had had some specific questions, so I'll kind of just wait and let those be re-asked. But it's also really important that if people are vaccinated, they feel welcome to be without masks and to be close to one another, if that's what they choose to do, because it shows how well the vaccine works, and it actually entices people to get vaccinated. You know, one thing that I, I was wrong on, and I think maybe a lot of people, but I'll just say myself, many, many months ago, was that there were two camps, those who wanted to get vaccinated and those who were going to be opposed. And that's just really not the case. There are many more camps, and a lot of those in the middle, you know, you make it convenient for them, you just catch them on the right day, and, and they get vaccinated. It still, to this day, blows me away a bit. But if that's what works for them, that's, that's great. So I'll just stop there, and we can field any questions.
Thank you both very much. Jim, I see you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is for both Megan and Dr. Dobson. You may or may not be able to answer this, but don't school districts require a polio vaccine and other vaccinations in order for a child to attend schools? Is that correct or not?
So it, I'll, I'll let Megan talk to it. It is correct, but that's by state declaration. And we do not have a state declared. So federally, they don't do it, but from a state declaration for COVID-19, we don't have that. Some states may do that, unfortunately, many will not. And that will, again, cause the problems that, that I just mentioned. The inefficiencies are enormous. In fact, I tell you, it's so funny that if you start talking to people about the business case to vaccinate, not the health reasons, but the business case, both in education and business, you start winning people over because they say, wow, it is so inefficient to have people vaccinated and unvaccinated. I have to pay extra staff, and in the school systems, you get all that slowdown. So private schools are different, they can require it. Anything you hear, by the way, out there that says, oh, you can't require it, people get sued, of course, people get sued for everything. I get sued for doing the right thing, and I'm sure many of you have been involved in some of those things. But there is true that in public school system, unless the, the state declares that, we won't probably see that move forward without significant legal challenges. Megan, you want to add to that?
Yeah, just, you know, what we've seen with just the, the regular kind of toolkit of vaccines that are available to, to students, and keeping up with that on a yearly basis, even non-COVID. You know, your pertussis and your varicella, those get, you know, missed wellness visits are hit. So yes, keeping up with that can be difficult catching that.
Other questions? Um, this morning, this morning, I asked Trey about the mask, you know, what it means for the, for the declaration, the emergency declaration to go, you know, to be rescinded, both in terms of businesses in town and also in terms of our meetings, because we will go back to in-person meetings for our next meeting. And Trey, I don't know if you want to, if you can just talk a little bit about what feels, what feels safe in this changing landscape?
Yes. Yeah, there's many ways to look at it. We'll just kind of focus on, I'll, I'll give sort of a recommendation, but of course, this is flipped to that body. But it really is to say, if you are vaccinated, there are no requirements of masking or distancing, and you can mask if you feel more comfortable to doing that. And in fact, in the winter, I think we will see some people that may want to mask if they're in closed areas just for influenza and other viruses. And then ask that people that are unmasked, please continue, sorry, unvaccinated, please continue to mask. And you just sort of leave it at that. People say, well, what about, how are you going to know if people are vaccinated or not? Well, you're not, and that's part of the risk of, of sort of, you know, living and, and knowing, you don't know if someone is carrying a firearm next to you. You don't know lots of things in that way. And not putting too much concern behind it, because, you know, this is unfortunate, but those unvaccinated people will eventually get COVID-19, and they'll either develop immunity to it for, for a while, which is good, or unfortunately, they'll, they'll become ill. But it's, we're at a point now, we've moved, and, and it's pretty clear from state mandates to self-autonomy and the decision, and we've got a pretty good start, much better start than other states.
Great, thank you. And we'll talk a little more about what, what we're plan, what we're intending for the in-person meeting later in the meeting. Jean, you have your hand up.
Yeah, this is, um, just a curious question I have, and you may not have the answer, but let's just say it's next March, and I get sick with a respiratory illness. Will I be tested for COVID? Do you feel like doctors will be doing that?
Yeah, it'll be a, that's a great lead-in to real quick. I can just catch everyone up on what the, the health system here will be doing. But you will be tested for COVID if it's appropriate. The reason I say if it's appropriate, for example, people with the flu aren't always tested for the flu, but I can see that, that most of the time, we will be testing for COVID. Well, most likely around the country, we'll be doing a double test for COVID and flu. In some places, you'll see these tests that actually, I mean, we have them available here. They, they actually test for 17 respiratory viruses, but it's money not well spent. But COVID and influenza is well spent because they're, they are quarantined. You know, flu has a quarantine behind it. If you get the flu, you're supposed to stay away from people for a couple of days. And now with COVID, for much longer. So yes, you will be tested. Again, the good news is, is that if you're vaccinated, it's very unlikely that you develop symptoms. And if you do, then it's a small percentage, and that happens with any, any vaccine. So real quick with the hospitals, what we've done is, and, you know, working with many organizations in the, in the community, primary care offices, the Department of Health and the pharmacies. But we're still going to maintain testing, really striving to have open access to testing seven days a week without an appointment. That's not the case yet. Right now, we still require an appointment. It, it has to do with how the billing is done and so forth. I hope we can get over that. We're working with the state so that testing can be done seven days a week in our walk-in clinic. That's the way it should be, right? It should be easily accessible. We should have an accurate test with results back to you quickly, because that's what decreases morbidity and mortality. In other words, illness, suffering, and death is to know you've got it, you stay away from people. That hasn't changed. There are people who want to back away from that, not here in the organization, but they think, oh, COVID is, you know, kind of gone, so why are we doing all this easy testing? Maybe we should only offer it every other day, and that's all baloney. That's not how infectious disease works until a certain point, possibly. Same thing with vaccines. So we do have vaccine available by walk-in, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, seven days a week now, for 12 and above. So those folks who decide on a whim they want to get it, they can come here and get the vaccine, and that'll persist probably indefinitely, just like they could come get the flu vaccine if they wanted to during flu season.
Great. Stuart, you have your hand up.
Yes, just very quickly, Trey, and that, and that is at Express Care that those vaccines are available, correct?
That's right. Now, we are, we will have some vaccine available in certain primary care offices, starting very soon. And we also are able to give it now in the emergency department for people that present for other reasons, as well as hospitalized patients that are, you know, are well enough to receive vaccine. It turns out, it is, it's not as easy to offer a vaccine in a primary care office as you might imagine. We've probably touched on this before. But first off, it kind of gets in the, in the way of the flow of people who really need to be seen for a medical reason. It takes resources and staffing. They're only doing a couple a day because not that many people are presenting, and so they're not as efficient. And then you've got the wasted vaccine. So we're trying to get people to go to just one location, but there are individuals who might visit their OB-GYN, for example, and decide, you know, I'm six months pregnant, I realize now the risk of COVID far outweighs any problems with vaccine, but I want to get it from you because I trust you. And so we're trying to make that option available as well.
Great. And I can share to the majority of independent primary cares in the county as well have signed on as vaccine providers as well, in addition to SVHCs, PCPs. So we're excited to hear that. Either they're signed on or they've expressed a lot of interest. So we're really optimistic about that.
Great. Jim, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, a question that I had at, at an earlier meeting, Dr. Dobson, was whether or not, you know, some people who have to have strict attendance at their, in form of employment have not been able to be vaccinated. And I wondered to what end either the state or the town has gone to address that, if they've gone onsite to those workplaces.
Yeah, so, so we have, Jim, it's a great question. Just last week, we went to MacMoley, and, you know, we're able to get 15 vaccines. We tried to give more. That at first kind of sounded disappointing to some of the staff, and we pointed out, oh, that's not disappointing at all. That affects way more than 15 people. And in fact, way more than even the 15 people that voluntarily came to our first vaccine clinic, right? Because these people are less willing, probably less willing to adhere to mitigation. So that was great. We then traveled to, to local hotels that evening and gave out 22 doses, which I thought was remarkable. Megan's group has done clinics at, at apartment complexes. And then we've offered to come by, you know, it's not even having a clinic, just come by to local workplaces and give the vaccine. And so far, some have, have been really excited, but when we get there, people don't necessarily want it, so we'll just keep going.
How about other businesses like Price Chopper, Hannaford, Walmart? You know, they get a huge number of people that are coming through the door.
Yeah, so the great news is, every single one of those places you mentioned actually offers vaccine. A, a good story is, I go to Starbucks at Price Chopper, probably way too much. And just by talking to the staff, most of whom were kind of in the middle, not probably going to get it, they've all now gotten vaccinated because it was offered right there, 25 feet from there, or 35 feet from their location at the pharmacy. So that's really, you're, you're exactly right. Those are good places to, to get vaccinated.
And I just want to finish on one note. You said that you drink a lot at Starbucks. There was, there was an article in today's paper that said that if you drink between five and six cups of coffee, you have a, a greater chance of dying at a later date.
All right, Jim. All right, all right. We're not going to get reversed here. Okay.
I'm going to live forever.
All right, I want to see if there are any panelists or attendees that have questions for Trey or Megan? Any questions out there? All right, looks like we are. All right, it looks like you have answered every question we have. Thank you both.
Super.
Great, yeah, this is a, I'm happy that you're here with us tonight because this is a day, this is really a time to celebrate. Yeah.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all.
Good night.
Thank you very much, folks.
All right, so on that happy note, we're now going to move on to public comment. So first, I want to share the six practices that we've agreed upon that will make public comment period more productive and informative. First, that public comment is intended as an opportunity to share information and make announcements that benefit the community at large. The topic should not be on the agenda already. You'll be able to speak to an agenda item when we get to it on the agenda. Please keep your comments to three minutes or less. You're required to state your true full name and town of residence. And please share comments, announcements, and concerns rather than asking questions. And if you do have questions, the best way to get them answered is to contact our Town Manager and have a conversation with him. If the topic requires more discussion, then the Board may consider putting that item on a future agenda. So with that, is there anyone in of the attendees who would like, who has a question? Or, sorry, has a comment about something that's not on tonight's agenda? No one? Oh, my goodness. Okay, that might be a first in a year. All right, then what we will do is move on to our next agenda item. So we have with us here tonight, Derek Chomings. And she is here with the Mount Anthony Union Middle School Youth Leadership Group to talk to us about community dialogue. to talk to us about community dialogue. And I'm going to turn it over to you, De'ara, to introduce everyone.
So the rest of the team is currently in the attendees column. Do they have to be on the panel in order to speak? So maybe I should send them the link to that really quickly.
No.
I'm not sure how it works.
Dan can, Dan can elevate them.
Okay, great.
Right. Dan, is that the best thing to do?
Jeanne, do you want to elevate the panelists or just allow them to talk?
Well, I guess they could raise, well, can they talk at the same time? You want them to raise their hand?
Well, we're going to be screen sharing.
Okay, so let's.
The students will be reading, so.
It probably makes sense to elevate them.
Okay, I can do that. I just need to know who to do that to.
Colin. Colin Joyce, Lucy Poole, Thomas, this should be on there. Let's see. Where is everybody?
I don't see Thomas.
Might not have Thomas on here yet. Alyssa Erizari should come on. Glauka Koimans should come on. Oh, Lara Frenzel Clark, that'll be Thomas.
Okay.
And I think that's it. Glauka will tell me if I missed anybody. Thank you for doing that. All right, friends, let's see. All right. So as they get settled, thank you so much for hosting us. I'm De'ara Chamings, the Director of ACT here in Bennington, where the South Shire Substance Missuse Prevention Coalition, we focus on healthy youth in our community. And the leadership group is a collaboration between ACT and the Mount Anthony Union Middle School. And this group was comprised of 11 seventh and eighth graders who met weekly throughout the school year to work on prevention initiatives for their school. And I do want to note that they did this entire year entirely remotely. And they exceeded expectations despite this. So I just really wanted to recognize that. So this evening, we'll present how the 2019 Youth Risk Behavior Survey data inspired them to create and launch action campaigns around youth substance use and suicide prevention. And they first presented this in May and they wanted me to extend their special thanks to the select board for giving them an opportunity to come on tonight. We only have a few friends here because it is summer and most of our team is involved with some summertime activities. But I think you'll be impressed with what they've created. So I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Glauka Koimans. She's the Prevention Coordinator at Mount.
Yes, I'm Glauka Koimans. I am the school facilitator of the Youth Leadership Group. And the Youth Leadership Group did an amazing job putting together a community dialogue in which they highlighted the awareness they created around youth substance use and suicide prevention and to contribute to increase wealth and health among their peers. And I am very excited to present to you Lucy Poole, Colin Joyce and Thomas Saunders. And they will, they will, you know, present the presentation of tonight. Good luck, guys.
Why we joined the Youth Leader Group? The reason why I joined the Youth Leader Group was to help people in our community. Another important reason to me was to try to help kids with their mental health and making sure their voices could be heard.
Morgan joined Youth Leadership.
Morgan joined Youth Leadership.
Morgan joined. To help bring attention to problems that us youth face. That us youth face. Hold on. That us youth face. Hold on. That us youth face. On. That us youth face.
Thomas, do you have?
That youth face in our community.
Go ahead, honey.
Yeah. I'm on my mom's phone, sorry.
No, you're good. Go ahead.
That our youth face in community that are often overlooked by adults. Danica joined because Youth Leadership was to have a voice in our community. She also wanted to help her community to make it a better place. I, there are a variety of reasons why I joined Youth Leadership. One of the main reasons I decided to join is I wanted to help the community be as strong as possible. I also wanted to have a voice in both our community and our school community as well. Helping others is important to me and I think that it is what communities are all, are, communities are all about. And then I joined Youth Leadership because I want to make a difference and help those who might not be able to find help themselves.
Colin, do you want to read Riley's piece or?
Sure. The reason I joined Youth Leadership Group is I wanted to help the people in our community. I know that there's no possible way to fix every problem, but trying to fix a couple of problems might really help someone. Not only that, but I feel that Youth Leadership Group was a good way to meet new people that strive to do the same thing.
Why prevention is important to us? The reason why prevention is important to me is because it, because it's really sad to see that there's so many people that have felt helpless or sad and don't have someone to turn to.
Prevention is important to me because it gives us an opportunity to help those who just don't know if they have a way out. And then prevention is important to Morgan because so many kids destroy their futures by starting to use substances, substances when they are young.
Colin, do you want to read for Riley?
Sure. Prevention is important to me because it's terrible to see the amount of people who have thought about killing themselves or feeling hopeless. It's our job as a community to do better. We need to work harder to make sure that those numbers go down.
I can go ahead and read Kaylin. She said prevention is important to her because it makes her upset to see so many people think they aren't worth it. And Danica said prevention is important to me because when I saw the results from how many people thought about killing themselves and are feeling hopeless in the past month, is why I wanted to help. We want to make those numbers go down. We, as a community, can help change that.
What is the Youth Risk Behavior Survey? The Youth Risk Behavior Survey, YRBS, is a survey sent out every two years that polls the students of Vermont counties on topics from how many have access to three meals a day to how many students have ever tried alcohol. We use the YRBS to help find the topics that we wanted to focus on bringing attention into our community.
What is getting to the Y? Getting to the Y was a training that we went through in order to understand how to analyze the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. This training helped us narrow down our thoughts on our community's strengths and concerns.
Our community's data strengths. Eighty-three percent of students eat with at least one adult family member at least four times per week. Seventy percent of Bennington County students feel there is at least one teacher or adult in the building that they can talk to if they have a problem. Eighty-nine to ninety percent of students' parents think parents or guardians would not agree with them vaping, using alcohol or using other substances. Ninety percent of middle schoolers in Bennington County chose not to use vape products in the past month.
Our community's data concerns. Ten percent of middle schoolers in Bennington County have ever used marijuana products. Twenty-five percent of middle schoolers in Bennington County have reported feeling sad or hopeless. And fifty percent of LGBTQ plus middle schools in Bennington County have thought about killing themselves.
Our focus was mainly on suicide prevention and mental health and vaping and substance use prevention. Our action campaign, social media. In this 21st century, technology and social media plays a huge role and we decided to use that to our advantage. We launched a social media campaign posting a motivating, motivating image and quote, "every Friday." These cards have gotten overwhelmingly positive responses from members of the community as well as school administration and peers. Our action campaigns, Sunshine Box, as well as our social media campaign, we decided that once we were back to attending school in person, we would launch another project. The goal of our sunshine boxes is to bring a little bit of happiness to students' lives, especially now when everything is, is seen so different and negative. Sunshine Boxes come once per month to students who sign up online. Each month, the box is a theme. Last month, the theme was building and designing, and this month, the theme will be stress relief. Each box includes contact information for an organization like the Trevor Project and My Life, my quit to help teens. This is just a basic design of what the sunshine box looked like.
Thank you, Lucy, Colin and Thomas. You guys did an amazing job again. So now there's time for the boards to ask some questions in case they have some questions.
This is great. I'm wondering, do you want to, do you want to stop sharing screen? That's great. And then we can see, does anyone, Jean, I see you have your hand up. Yeah, first I just want to say, I would never have believed you were middle schoolers by listening to the wisdom that you just shared. That was truly impressive. And I don't know, De'ara, maybe you do. It seems to me that youth, coming, you know, sharing this message with other youth must be incredibly powerful, maybe even more powerful than an adult sharing with a young person. So anyway, I'd like to hear your thoughts on that. I have just a little housekeeping question. So the sunshine boxes, that was such a cool idea. Were they mailed to their homes? How did they get their sunshine box? Was it supposed to be a private thing? And so nobody knew you were getting a sunshine box or, or were people, you know, sharing them in the hallways?
It was, Miss C, do you want to share how we got it up?
Well, actually, maybe Lucy wants to share because Lucy did help me hand them out.
Oh, do we still have Lucy? I know she had swim tonight, so she might have jumped off.
I can share, yeah, we can, it was a co-production of De'ara and, and myself, actually. Because De'ara was the, the main force behind creating the boxes and collecting the items that went in the boxes. Then I was the main force into getting the message out, meaning, which was, sounds easy, but it's actually not that easy at the middle school, which means that I had to create a message which would explain what theirs matches was about. Then I had to send it to the principal who would put it in his Google classroom. Then I had to remind him because he's so busy.
Many layers at the middle school.
Yeah, many layers. And then, and then all advisory teachers, they had to put it in their Google classrooms for the students to actually see the message.
And it was a, it's, it's an online smart sheet survey form that would go out. And then they would sign up and we would get it. And then Alyssa, who is doing our tech tonight, our projects coordinator, would actually put all the boxes together. But it's the Youth Leadership Group that came up with the designs and the, and the contents of the boxes. They designed a logo for the boxes. It was all very professionally done. So we're really proud of them.
And how did the students physically get them?
Well, so then ACT made sure they dropped them off at the middle school. So they met with me because they were not allowed to get into the building. So they met with me. I took all the boxes from them. I made sure that it was allowed to keep all the boxes at the main entry. Then Lucy and Morgan, one of the other Youth Leadership Group students, helped me distributing the boxes to all the specific teams because the kids had to sign up which team they were from. And we actually did bring them to the classrooms so that teachers could hand them to the students the next day, or we put them on their desk.
How many, how many kids signed up to get a box, a sunshine box?
It varied each month. I think last month we had close to 90 kids. But each, each box had something a little bit different. So, you know, there was something for everyone.
Yeah, thank you.
And Jean, just to speak to your earlier point about that peer-to-peer support, we know that that works. We know that it's effective and we know it means so much when one student reaches out to another one and says, you know, I see you're struggling. How can I help? And what really struck us about our group this year was the compassion and empathy that they have for their fellow students, even ones they don't know, and especially in the face of the pandemic. You know, right out of the gate, they said, we are really concerned about the mental health of our, our peers because this is a really challenging, challenging time. How can we help them navigate this, right? Which was pretty incredible for some of the eighth grade students.
That's great. Bruce, I see you have a question.
Yes. My question has to, is going to go to, well, I don't know who can answer it, but it's about the response of, from the LGBTQ students, fifty percent of whom have felt, said, or thought about committing suicide. What have been the responses regarding that particular fact? I'm knowing how long the survey is. I'm sure that, that seems like it has impressed the Youth Leadership Group. But how, what's been the, what, what cons, what steps are being taken now? Because that's a really dangerous number.
It is, it is. That's the countywide number. And it's really just pushing that resource information out there, making sure that we are working as a community to enhance those protective factors, making these students know that, hey, you're safe here. We're here for you. You have support. I know for our students at Youth Leadership Group, they wanted to make sure that the resource information that we were pushing out was, was going to, you know, be appropriate, which is why we chose the Trevor Project as one of our resources to hand out to students. I know that our school districts are working really hard on this. It's a serious concern.
Yeah, we, for example, but it's not necessarily related to the Youth Leadership Group efforts of this year. But at our school, we had Pride Day the other day, that everybody was wearing rainbow colors. And, you know, so that feels really nice, you know, very accepting. That's an example of, you know, how, how one is working towards solving.
Great.
The problem.
Thank you.
That's wonderful. I see we have an attendee who had, who would like to speak, Deborah Towesley. So I am allowing you to speak. You should be able, see if you can speak. Did that work? Yes. Deborah Towesley? Oh dear. It looks like she should be able to speak. Hmm. All right. Well, we'll come back to her. Any other questions from select board members? That was a very impressive, very impressive presentation and very concerning, hopeful on one side and concerning numbers on the other. So, um, so I'm gonna, let's see, I'm going to, I think at this point, I don't. So, um so I'm gonna, let's see, I'm going to, I think at this point, I don't.
Jeannie, Bruce has his hand up. Bruce has his hand up.
New hand?
New hand.
Yeah, this is a new hand. Sorry. I I had meant to ask that if somebody wanted to get a hold of the um risk. Um the survey, where would be the best place to get the youth risk survey? At this point.
Yeah, just go to the Vermont Department of Health website. Um there just Google YRBS Vermont and it'll take you right to. Um and you can see pastures as well if you want to compare data. Um and just so that people are aware, the twenty twenty one survey was delayed because of COVID. Um it was supposed to be administered in the spring, so they're gonna do it in the fall. We're gonna have a gap. Um so we're trying to capture some data in between now, so.
Yes, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you so much.
Great. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you all. That was really, that was really wonderful. And thank you for reaching out to share this with us in the community. It's great.
A special, a special thank you to the students.
Absolutely. Yay. All right, so we'll say bye and um I'm we're gonna, let's put up the number again. I think someone was trying to get in. During public comment and the telephone, um the telephone number either didn't work or it is not an accurate number. So. To dial, to call in, you would um dial one six four six five five eight. Eight six five six with the meeting ID number of eight nine four. Four eight seven eight two three four six. All right, and so just keep a lookout. Um and we'll try and catch, if there is anyone who was calling in for a public comment and was not able to get in. We will try and catch you between um between agenda items. Okay? All right, so um next on our agenda is a recovery housing presentation. So you may have seen Saturday's Bennington Banner had um a useful introduction to the topic. And what we're hoping tonight is to uh provide more context. And also um of the need and also the opportunity that we have for recovery housing in Bennington. Um and what the select board is going to be asked to do is to take a first step in this process. By approving a resolution, allowing the town of Benning- Bennington to apply for Vermont Community Development Grant. To develop recovery housing in Bennington with Shire's Housing as a sub-grantee. And developer of the project. And with that mouthful, I'm gonna turn it over to Shannon to introduce the team and um talk to with us.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us. And I think, Jeannie, you already covered a lot, but um just so everyone does understand. This is community development funding, so we've tie- I've come to talk about other community development projects. And this is similar in the sense that any community development um application requires a resolution from the select group before we apply. And at this point, we haven't applied yet. So there is not funding for this particular project yet. But we would like to move forward with an application. And the way that that would work is the the funds would be granted to the town. And then the sub-grantee would be Shire's Housing leading the project as uh a developer of affordable housing. With lots of years of experience working within Bennington and also working with the community development program. So with that, I'm gonna introduce Stephanie Lane from Shire's Housing, and then she'll also introduce John Rogers from um Mission City. Who I think is gonna be speaking more to the recovery housing model. I don't know if Alex is used to Stephanie. Um or if he's gonna weigh in um from the Bennington Oakwood Response.
He was invited, Shannon. I'm not sure if he's fine to be able to attend.
He's in the attendees with his hand up, so maybe we can. Send him our way.
Right. All right, well, good evening. My name is Stephanie Lane. I'm the executive director and director of development for Shire's Housing. Uh I'm not here alone, certainly. Um I'm joined by people who have a shared passion for the work we are proposing. Including John Rogers of Mission City Church, Ralph Bennett of Turning Point Center. Madison Kramer, who is my development assistant. And Lon McLean Talk, who's one of the owners of the properties that we are proposing to develop the housing. And uh you know, we've we've been very lucky and had some support in terms of that, and and we're really pleased to see that. Um our mission is to su- to support housing, and I'm not sure how we sit this one out. Uh we have a commitment to house those in need. So how do we turn our backs on this particular need? Uh it it impacts all of our tenants. It impacts all of us. So I I feel like it's our responsibility to do something to address it. As it stands, um in Bennington, we have no beds and uh this would be actually the first. Fourteen to sixteen beds brought into Bennington to assist those in recovery. Um currently, there are no beds. And we are part of the hub and spoke, uh and everyone is directed to go to either out of state or to Rutland. To receive the treatment that they need. There's nothing in Bennington right now. Um our proposal is pretty simple. It's to provide housing to members of the recovery ecosystem of which we speak. Um I can't imagine that there are many of us who have not been impacted by this. Um this is something that impacts everyone. I don't think that there there are many of us who haven't been impacted by family or friends who have experienced this. And what we are trying to do is just provide a safe and and respectable and decent place for them to recover. Either after going through rehab or after, you know, a difficult stint. Um and people, places, and things are what we talk about. And we'd like to be able to provide them with a safe place where they can get the services that they need and where they can recover. Um depending on, the time is not limited. It depends on what they need. And I, you know, as a houser, I don't see how I can not participate in this. Um I defer to the experts. Um I'm joined by John Rogers and Ralph Bennett, John of Mission City Church, Ralph Bennett. Of um Turning Point Center, uh my assistant, Madison Kramer, and others. So I I think in terms of programming, I'd like to pass it to them. But I just want everyone to know how strongly we feel about this and how much, you know, how long we've been waiting for this to come to fruition. Um John, perhaps you could speak to your model and enlighten the board a little bit.
Happy to. Uh I think we forwarded the uh of just a handful of slides to sort of frame things up of. If I can share the screen, I can just hit, sort of touch on each one of those slides very briefly and then open it up for questions. That sounds good. I'll click the share screen button, see if that works. Yeah, there we go. So um. Yeah, so we've got a team together. Um you know, I'm John Rogers. I've been living in Bennington County for about twenty-two years. I run a twelve-step recovery program in Bennington on Wednesday nights called Celebrate Recovery. And uh you know, just got the, you know, front row seat to. Uh some of the opportunities we have to really meet people where they're at, especially those that are that are seeking sobriety. Um from substances and from alcohol. And uh this was all new to me two, three years ago, but uh. Uh it was a reoccurring theme as I got to meet people and know people in the community. I'm also in long-term recovery myself. So that's just a little bit about me. Uh Stephanie had chaired, got Ralph Bennett um from Recovery Coaching. And from Turning Point as well, and David Regal, who runs B four, which is one of the leading. Um operators of recovery residences for the state, and they're VTAR certified. And and it's sort of our operating experts, so we'll be running um one of one of the two houses that we're talking about. So so let me just hit these slides real fast and then um wow, I mean, stop us along the way or or you can get questions at the end. It's, this is real simple slides, really. It's just, you know, um. Uh why, what, when kind of thing. So Stephanie hit this first slide, the second one is really the why. And I think we all know the why, but some good information from Mark Levine might help us just frame it. Um for folks under fifty, it's overdoses of from substances is the number one killer. If you add in alcohol, which is, was really interesting to me, if you add in alcohol, take away the fifty. It's the fourth largest killer of of anything right behind uh, I think it just edges out COPD. So you've basically got, if you look down, you've got heart disease, cancer, um a few other things. And then, you know, alcohol and substitute disorder is our fourth largest killer in our country right now. So in Vermont, we're not protected from it anymore. I mean, we all, we're seeing it everywhere and uh that's the why. We talk about recovery housing, uh just to get an idea of what we're talking about uh there. It's really uh similar to what the kids were saying earlier about how impactful peer-led programs are. And um the idea, the framework behind recovery housing is peer-led. I mean, there certainly is structure. Uh but you can see this little diagram on the right. You know, we we give people a safe uh quality place to live. We give them accountability. We give them uh make sure they're compliant. And then we encourage them to plug into the community and all the services the community has. And uh and we also make it a home environment where they really do feel like home and they're with other like-minded folks that are. Seeking sobriety and holding each other accountable. So that is the, that is sort of the model. Um you know, we certainly are gonna work with them to get them a purposeful work, uh get their education complete, whatever they need. If it's mental health, uh counseling, whatever they need, we'll plug them into the resources in the community. But uh at the very core, it is folks seeking sobriety and being with others that can relate and support one another. And that is the framework. Um so we can, we can answer more questions. Actually, if I'm smart, I'll let David answer those questions. Cause he runs several houses across the state. Um also Jeff Moreau is, I think, is on the call somewhere. He is the VTAR. Uh leader for our state, and he's the one that certifies these residences. So he's another guru that uh we were consulting with. Um he's on the call in case you have questions for him as well about how these residences have a positive impact on the community. So Jeffrey's out there somewhere if you need him. Uh next slide just sort of talks about what Stephanie said. In our little corner of the state, we have no residences. Uh this graphic shows you, the red shows you all the places in the state that are hubs, that have um places for folks to go. And you can see our corner, we've got our turning point down here, but we have no recovery residences for women or men. Uh we have the closest one would be Brattleboro or Rowland, and the demand is really high. Especially coming out of COVID, it's, it's gonna be high. So that that gives you sort of perspective on where we're at. And then to get specifics, uh we have two homes under, under contract or in under control at this point. Uh the first one is the one on North Street, uh the Squire Building, probably all recognize that. It's right. Right in the middle of town, which is really important for folks and beautiful, beautiful home. Our idea is to have a um a community home on the first floor where five individuals will live as as a home. And then we would have two apartments upstairs for women, potentially women with children. So this would be our women's home. So five um individuals and then possibly women with children upstairs. We've heard, as we started this, we started out talking about men is our place to start. And as we sort of shared with the community and and sort of um shared around town, we continued to hear folks saying, what about women? What about women and kids? What about women? Um so um Ralph and Turning Point running parallel was our little team. And we sort of landed almost at the same time at Stephanie's doorstep uh to help us with funding and and grant writing. And uh so we realized, well, let's let Ralph pursue the men's home and we'll go after the women's and women's and kids. So that's sort of how we framed it out. Uh next slide is the men's project. That 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 home is on Gage Street. And Ralph, if you're, if you, you're plugged in here, you could speak to this this slide a little bit if you'd like.
Sure, thank you. Um yeah, this is a home where um honestly, uh kind of a forceful. Decision we made because of the bylaws and and the zoning regulations. We're gonna turn this into a two-family home where one side will have four bedrooms, the other side will have four bedrooms. And what we'll do is bring the newer people into one side of the house and work with them, of course, with a little more structure and supervision. And then as they go through our program, we would transfer them to the other side of the house where they would have a little uh more freedom. Um and be able to uh start, you know, getting employment and working. Um and then also from that, we would be going into apartments in the community with those folks. Um our our model would be, uh you know, we would have a house manager live in. Um this would be somebody with long-term recovery and also a certified recovery coach. Um and they would be in the house. Um we have several, you know, regulations and, you know, for them to sign, they all sign program contracts. Um that they will follow the rules that we have set in place for the program. Um but I just want to say quickly that, you know, without the help of Shire's Housing, um we wouldn't be where we are. Um Stephanie and her folks have been very instrumental in uh being able not only to get this going. Um but to help us with the uh grants and their their continued hoops. And um you need to get through um in order to make something like this successful. So I wanna thank her and let the board also know that. But that's where we're at, and this is important for this community. Um along with John, I I am also in long-term recovery. I retired in two thousand nineteen and kind of just let my passion lead me. Um ended up volunteering at the Turning Point. And now I'm certified recovery coach at the emergency department at the hospital. Um and we see it. Um we really need a place for these folks getting out of rehab to come and just get a foundation so they can be successful and safe in our community.
And the last, last two couple of points for me, just to build on what Ralph was saying is. Um you know, we see, you know, being someone in recovery and seeing a lot of folks that are struggling uh with substitute disorder. We're seeing this as an opportunity to give someone a a longer window to really work on themselves, get themselves right, get themselves right with others. And really get plugged back in in a healthy way with some good guardrails around them. And um so many people go into a twenty-eight day treatment program and they come out and they're not ready. And they go right back into the same environment where they came from and it doesn't end well. And so what this is allowing folks to do is have have the period of time and the safety and the guardrails and the accountability. They need to really change their life and really start to make, get some strength in their recovery so they can make. Uh healthy life, life decisions. So we're talking, we're not talking twenty-eight days. We're talking. Um for the program for the women, we're talking anywhere from eight to fourteen months. They'll be there, and then they'll transition back out into more independent living in the community. But it'll really give them the strength they need to 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 have it stick. And then the last slide is really, I don't know who that good-looking guy is there, but um it's just a list of us on the left, the four that we just talked about. And the one thing I wanted to say, I mean, Mission City's been getting a lot of press and and that, you know, I'm associated with them. But there's a whole host of churches in the community that are in alliance with us. So Harvest, Green Mountain. Um Capstone, several churches are all in play, uh wanna be a part of this and are are at the table. So Mission City happens to get get the press, but it's it's several, um half a dozen almost or more than that in the community. They're aware of this, supportive of this, and are engaged. So that's it. I'm ready for questions and uh thanks for listening.
Thank you, John. That was, that was very, very helpful. Do you wanna um, do you wanna take your slideshow off so that it's easier to see? Is.
I'll do that.
And then I see that Bruce has his hand up and then Jim. And then Gary. Right.
Okay.
Yes.
Hi, uh not so much a question, just a kind of a testimonial about twenty-five years ago or a little bit more than that. Um as a legal services attorney over in central New York, I helped establish something very similar uh there. Uh this is not a a new model, but it's a very successful model. And it's something that uh uh I know that we have been needing here in Bennington. When people talk to me and they say, what can we do about substance abuse? I tell them a quick uh very quick story about um a former student from Mount Anthony. Who uh didn't graduate, but instead graduated. Uh, didn't graduate, but instead graduated to the correctional system. Got out uh, because, because of substance abuse, basically. Got out and was paroled back into the community, right back into the same places that, that where he was. It's that same revolving door that John had talked about. And it's been at least since then, that I talked to him. Almost twenty years ago, up in Rutland, uh, and I've been looking for something like this to happen and I. I'm really grateful for you to be working on this and uh. Thank you and I'm hopeful that we will see a lot of community support for this, these two projects.
Thank you, Bruce. Uh, short, short story, I, uh, a year and a half ago, I was at a, a meeting and um, a young man from our community came in. Had just got out of treatment, twenty-eight day treatment. And he was struggling with methamphetamines and uh, had uh, pretty much burned all his bridges. And uh, no one really wanted him to sleep on their couch anymore because everybody was gonna die there. And uh, he was there with his sponsor and. Spent the night, got to know him, shared with him a lot. End of the night, he pulled me aside and said to me. Um, really thank you for tonight. It was really wonderful to be here and, and, you know, be loved and uh. And he says, but I don't think I'm gonna make it. And uh, he said stronger words than that, but. And I said, why not? And he said, well, I'm sober right now, I'm clean. But I'm moving back in with my brother and my next-door neighbor is my drug dealer. And I s- I'm like just looking at him and he's about to walk out the door, say goodbye and I said, what can we do different? He says, get me a place. Where I can go. And be protected from something I'm out of control, that's got control of me and away from this environment. I have nowhere to go. And that was the start of me learning that this isn't a new idea. And it was the start of me learning how effective it can be if it's done right. And uh, our community needs it and I meet, meet the people all the time saying they need it. Really need it.
Thank you, John.
Yep.
So Jim, you're up.
Uh, thank you. I want to thank each and every one of you. Uh, Alex, Ralph, John, David, Shannon. And um. Who am I? Stephanie, believe anybody else. This is such important work. I don't think there's anybody from this board. Uh, or for that matter, anybody in this town. Who doesn't know someone. Or one of their family members. Who's been touched or. Become addicted. I know I have personal friends. Whose kids got into this. And, and how they got into it really is irrelevant. Um, but one of my chief concerns. For you is uh, long-term funding. As you may remember. We as a board, um, pushed for. Um, the um. For cannabis, uh, retail cannabis in, in the town and unfortunately, it's not gonna. Come to fruition until October uh, twenty twenty-two. Nevertheless. I've spoken with, and I don't want to speak for my fellow board members, but I've spoken amongst them and uh. I'd like to see a significant portion of those funds. Go toward uh, long-term funding. So anyway, my first question to you all. Is have you thought of um, long-term funding? And the second is, you know, as far as uh, programmatic. Um, help, you know, Alex can probably speak to this in greater depth. Um, about the hubbing spokes approach to uh, treatment. And whether or not that this would be included in uh, treatment at these places. And I'll shut up for a little while.
Well, and if David Regal is, is, if he can get uh, get access to speak, he can probably talk to you a little bit about long-term. So, so we, we think we've got money to, you know, if, if things go well, Lord willing, we'll uh, we'll have the funding to renovate the buildings. Stephanie's got a plan and working with Shannon and we're, we're going to stay to do that, but. As far as I think you're asking is how do you, how do you sustain this long-term and. David's doing that, he's been doing that for years with before and, you know, he, he might be able to speak a little bit. It's, there's certainly membership. Um, fees involved, but there's also a lot of fundraising. So David, if, if you could. Uh, talk to that a little bit, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. Can everybody hear me okay? Thank you very, very much. Uh, uh, you know, both to the, the board chair as well as everybody else. Um, you know, as has already been mentioned, everybody that's been a part of the team and, and the support that's been out there. From the community a- as well as all the other organizations has just been really amazing and. We started a nonprofit organization called Vermont Foundation of Recovery, V4 for short, because it's a mouthful. Back in, at the end of twenty thirteen. And it was really because myself and another individual who both are in long-term recovery from substance use disorder. Realized that all the recovery housing was operated in the shadows. And it was afraid of not in my backyard. It was afraid of stigma. It was afraid of public ridicule. And there was no real oversight. There was no, you know, quality control. There was no way to. Make sure that homes were available to people who needed them and that they were operated in a way that was really. Above board, respectful and effective. And so um, we started this organization to try to bring it out of the darkness and into the light and, and uh, see what we could do to. Effect real change, not only locally in our community, but throughout the state. And so we've been open, uh, operating recovery housing ever since and uh, at this point, we have six. Recovery residences. Um, we're based out of Chitting County because frankly, that's where we live and that's where we got into recovery. So. You know, you start with what you know. Um, we have three homes in Essex, Vermont. We have a home in uh, St. Albans, Morrisville. And St. Johnsberry. And so we as an organization, we have a board of directors, we're a nonprofit five oh one C three. We do our own fundraising and we also, you know, work within the communities that we're a part of to have events. Throughout, you know, the course of the year to make sure that the homes are, are able to be run really well, but also be run. Long-term and be successful, um, you know, year over year over year. So we're really excited about the idea of the cannabis funding. Um, really excited to, to work with your community, but also to explore that idea in other communities around the state. That we have homes in and um, you know, there's, there's a lot of work that we do as well. We have, uh, you know, at the beginning of August, we do a golf tournament every year. Um, you know, we get funding and support from ADAP at the state level. Um, there's federal money that comes down through Samsha. Um, you know, there, there's all sorts of things. And in this particular area, the real benefit to working with an organization like Shire. Which we do in other areas, Champlain Housing Trust in Chitting County, Rural Edge out in St. Johnsberry, Downstreet Housing in Mary. Um, is that they have the access to the state and federal funds regarding the brick and mortar, right? Like housing is their business, that's what they do. So we want to partner. With an organization who has the expertise in that area and let them do what they do best and we'll do what we do best. And that's the way we view partnering with the recovery supports throughout the community. So the other part of the question was about the hub and spokes. Absolutely. Like we don't, we're not trying to be all things to all people. We're trying to focus on housing. And a safe, supportive environment that's based on peer-to-peer support. And um, we want the hub and spokes to do what they do. We want the recovery center to do what they do. We want all of the people in the community that are in the recovery community to do what they do, all the twelve-step. Um, you know, meetings that go on, all the other. Uh, recovery support meetings that happen, all the therapists, all the counselors, all the folks that are already out there. We just want to connect the people living in the homes to all of those people. Um, and help to make sure that, you know, they have a, a healthy path forward with the support that they need.
Thanks, David. That's, that's really helpful. It's a really a robust system. Um, Ralph, were you piggybacking on something David was saying?
I just wanted to mention and David's great. I, I've had several conversations with him as I got into this. Um, at least probably two years, year and a half ago. Um, but I also wanted to mention that this isn't a free ride for the folks we're working for either. Um, they pay, you know, either weekly or monthly. Um, to stay and receive the services that we're giving and also the housing. So I mean, it's in the budget that I've worked out because I had to propose this to the Turning Point Board. Um, I, the operating expenses for the house are covered. Um, well, above and beyond, um, you know, what we need just for the uh, program contracts that we'll be getting. From the individuals that come in. And then working with Jeffrey Moreau, I believe he's an attendee. I don't see him on the screen, but. He's the executive director for Vitar, um, for the certification agency that does the houses. And there's also several scholarships and grants available, um, from different agencies uh, for recovery housing. Um, so I really don't see a long-term of, a problem, especially with Shire's taking care of the housing piece of it. Um, where these programs wouldn't be sustained um, over on term.
Thank you, Ralph. He's, Ralph is absolutely correct. We also have uh, membership dues where people pay weekly. Um, and we require that people either work, go to school or volunteer a minimum of twenty hours per week. And so most people, you know, they end up with employment in order to satisfy their membership dues. And there's two reasons for it. One is, you know, the business model and you have to keep the lights on, right? But the other reason is really philosophically that um, people build self-esteem. By being able to stand on their own two feet, you know, and, and not only that, but we're working on trying to. Develop the life skills necessary for people to be successful, living independently. And when people transition out of these recovery homes, they need to have budgeting skills, right? Like they need to have a work ethic. They need to be able to be successful in those traditional land or tenant relationships. Um, you know, in order to be uh, independently successful and contributing members to society. So. The membership dues for us make up right around fifty percent of our, our annual budget as an organization as a whole. And a lot of the reason for that is because of things like insurance. You know, salaries, payroll taxes, all of the other stuff that goes into operating an organization. As those of you in, you know, uh, town government are well aware of the behind-the-scenes stuff that, you know, people don't know. Um, but I'll turn it over to Jeff because Ralph's right, like from a statewide perspective and in terms of. You know, knowing the players and also, um, you know, how this stuff works in a lot of other communities. He's definitely the expert.
Jeff, do you want to weigh in now?
Absolutely. Great. Well, thank you all for this opportunity. Um, I am so excited for your community. Um, when I first took on the role of executive director for the Vermont Alliance for Recovery Residences. Congressman Welch called and um, he was gonna be. On the western side of the state, um, somewhere in the Middlebury area. And um, he is a real believer in recovery residences and he had some time and wanted to visit one. And I said, sure, let me get that set up for you and quickly realized that there was nothing below Chitting and County. For your entire side of the state. And I think that that's been emphasized in the map that you've seen. Um, Rutland certainly has a, a treatment center. Um, there's some really good work happening there now. Um, but the only um, uh, location right now, um. On that side of the state is Dismis House, running a program in Rutland. So the need is enormous. Um, the second thing I wanted to say is, um. Certainly preaching to the choir here, um, and you folks have all spoken eloquently about substance use disorder. Um, and it certainly has gotten a lot of attention, um, rightfully so. Um, but I need to emphasize that alcohol dependence, um, is. Frankly, I'll be honest with you, it's a bigger issue. Um, and I think if we think. Um, hard, um, amongst ourselves and our families and our own experiences, um, we realize. Um, what a devastating disease uh, that can be as well. Um, my grandfather was an alcoholic. Um, my nephew uh, has a substance use disorder. Um, and so I've, I've been able to see uh, both lenses of that. Um, and I think Bruce said it absolutely perfectly. Um. Uh, people need to be removed from the environment that fuels those addictions. When I think of my nephew. Who is driving from Highgate, Vermont to Newport each day to try to access medically assisted treatment. He wasn't working. What was he doing? He was running the roads, um, and he was with the same group of people. And if he could have gone into a recovery home, his recovery would have um, been expedited exponentially. And so you folks talked about the hub and spoke system, we're, we're leaders. Um, in the country uh, with that model. And it's time that we lead in uh, the next step, which is really to provide. Uh, a safe, supportive environment for people to really focus on their recovery. And um, my role in all of this is to make sure that uh, these homes are operated. In the highest level of quality. So we base uh, our certification on national standards. Uh, from the National Alliance for Recovery Residences. David's programs uh, at V4 are already certified. Um, I, I made a visit. Geez, Ralph, was it three weeks ago or so uh, to uh, the home on Gage Street? Um, and was very impressed with that facility. I think it's ideal uh, for a recovery residence. Um, and. Um, I've, I've been working with Ralph for almost two years now uh, on this and have a lot of confidence in him. Uh, as well as John. I met John about a year ago, uh, and he came up to me and. At Recovery Day uh, in Montpelier, uh, and expressed his interest in, in making this happen. And here we are, you guys have done it. So a- again, I just want to thank you. And the final thing I'm gonna say, um, I forget, I think it was Jim uh, that maybe asked about sustainability. Um, I can tell you, um, I think David would say I'm a friend. Um, I, I have uh. Learned a lot from him. He's been a mentor in this field. Um, he really is kind of one of the founders of uh. Vitar, um, he brought us, um, and so he, we owe him a debt of gratitude. Um, and, and the point I want to make in, in getting to know David as a friend is. He's not um, doing this as a business enterprise. Um, he works another full-time job and I, he's often shy to. Tell you that, um, but he, he does this on the side and this is not a money-making uh, proposition. Um, it's unfortunately, um, it's, it's something that he's done with the heart and um. He has come up with a model uh, that has, again, um, is, is really a model. For the rest of the state and the country, and that is partnering with housing entities that know how to um. Operate these homes, that can access the funds, that can partner with you folks and he can come in and, and run the program. Um, and with that new model, it allows he, him and his team to really begin to go statewide. Um, so the, my point in all of this is that um. People um, are doing this from the heart and um, I think that. The more um, we can build this, there will be funds to continue. There's so much national attention. Uh, happening in this regard right now. Um, David's done some really good work um, with Medicaid. Um, can we get uh, some support there? There's some talk nationally around that. So um. You know, you hate to go with a, if you build it, they will come. Um, but I think if you build it, uh, we, we can find a way to sustain it. Um, we have a scholarship fund at the Vermont Community Foundation and it's really designed to help people. Get on their feet, get that employment, you know, help them with the first four to six weeks uh, of their stay. Um, and the state has been investing in those resources. We have COVID money right now that's helping with that. Um, so we can make this work. Um, David's proven it.
Thank you, Jeff. That's, that's great. Gary, I want to get to your question. Um, you've been waiting patiently.
Hey, well, thank you. Uh, thanks for such a great presentation. I, um. When I read through the memorandum, I had uh, no less than a dozen questions. Most of those you guys have answered. Uh, thank you for your compassion to this issue and um. And I think uh, we need this. I think um. I think that helping people with, with abuse, substance abuse and um, these dependencies. Is help to our whole community and uh, I thank you for, for pushing this ahead. Um, I have a couple of questions still left in my dozen. Um, but one is just. I think in the memorandum, it said that the, uh, the um. Uh, residents that will be at, at the male facility are from the, will be coming. residents that will be at the male facility are from, will be coming from the Turning Point. They'll be identified through the Turning Point program and process. And is that similar for the women that will be in the in the other facility? Then the other question I'm just going to ask, I think I have three of them. The other one is, will these services be prioritized for Bennington residents? And then the last one is, will there be a house manager at each one of the facilities? I know you said there would be one at the male facility for part of that. Will it be at the women's facility also?
So let's see how we want to, yeah, we can, I can speak to the women's facility on the Squire House. We will have a house manager there. Absolutely. There will be, there will be testing, there will be accountability. We'll make, we'll be working very hard to support folks and ensure that they are, you know, following through on their sobriety. So that's certainly going to be in place. We, and David, you can jump in and correct me if I say anything that's not correct. We're not necessarily just looking to go through Turning Point to find folks in the community that want to get into the home and want to pursue sobriety. But they're certainly going to be welcomed from everywhere. So it's not, we're not going to exclude anyone just because they didn't go through Turning Point. If that makes sense. But they will live by the guidelines of the home and will be ready to really pursue making healthy choices. And then I think that was the two questions for the women's house. And then Ralph, you want to answer the other one?
Sure. And what we're doing at the men's facility will be recovery coaches will be doing referrals along with the residents that are applying. And that's part of what Turning Point does. Myself as a coach, we do referrals to rehabs, detoxes, and also recovery housing. So we, of course, will be doing some referrals for women to David and John's program also, you know, for that service. But you know, it's just, right now, you mentioned Bennington residents. Julia, who works with me here, she's my supervisor, soon to be the director at our place. I might be letting the cat out of the bag, but Tom's resigning and retiring. So, but we currently have five Bennington residences, just at Serenity House alone in Wallingford. So I mean, it is a constant flow. And I really hope that we can get something open here to make the recidivism a little less active when they do get out.
I'll just quickly touch on it. So we, our website is where everybody applies. We'll accept anybody to apply from anywhere at any time, frankly. And when they do apply, we contact them and do a phone interview with them based on all the information they provide in the application. And so that, if they're accepted as a member, they're accepted at any one of our homes throughout the state. So then it's about determining who's the right fit for which home in the area. And I think what you'll find and, you know, what Jeff will share as well as, you know, John and Ralph, who are, you know, in recovery themselves is that, you know, when you're looking at somebody, it may be really great for them to stay in their community. And maybe it makes sense because they have a lot of natural supports and that's really healthy for them. Other times, that's the worst possible thing you could do is have somebody stay in the community that they're in or that they're from. And so you want to provide them with another opportunity. You know, like John said, we certainly have a house manager, you know, that's responsible for overseeing the home. We also have a lot of other house managers. We have a director of operations who's in charge of the day-to-day activities at all the houses. And, you know, supervises all our house managers throughout the state. We have an operations team that reviews any, you know, complicated situations or looks at, you know, scenarios that are going on that need more eyes than just one set of them. And then we have people who are on call. So, you know, somebody from Vermont Foundation of Recovery is available, you know, really 24/7 to be able to respond to any situation that were to come up at the home. And then we partner with people like John and the other folks in the community who are willing to be volunteers to make sure that we have somebody who can, you know, physically be there in a really timely manner.
Great. I'm going to, I'm going to, Gary, does that answer your question?
I think so. So there's no priority for Bennington residents for this particular facility. But by doing this, does it open up for Bennington residents that there's a better chance that they may be able to find a place in Vermont and maybe one of the other ones or at this one, if that's the one that they're looking for?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I would say the more inventory that's available throughout the state, the more chances people, specifically from Bennington, are going to have an opportunity at any one of those homes. The vast majority of people that we see are Vermonters. Very rarely do we see anybody from that state. And so we're probably already serving people from Bennington in some of our homes, you know, now. And we would, you know, welcome the opportunity to serve many, many more.
So I want to get to everyone's questions and we have some questions from the public as well. And we are, this has been a very robust conversation and we are time's moving. So I'm going to ask, Jim, I'm going to ask you to hold your questions so we can go to Sarah. And then I am wondering if Lon is wanting to comment. I see we have two people now as attendees that want to comment as well. So Sarah, why don't you go next?
So, thank you everyone for presenting. I know, we all know the need is there. I just wondered if it's, we've been, I think we've all been hearing from citizens as well. I wondered if it's possible to put an application through without the address on it and then come back and discuss the address after citizens and the community are able to learn more about this. And I think a lot of them have answered. Let me see, sorry. And sorry, hang on one second. I'm writing all this down. Also, are there examples of homes that you may provide to citizens that are in residential areas that may have other facilities such as a rec center near them? That you could provide to citizens that we've probably heard from? Those are two of my questions.
So Stephanie, perhaps answer the first one about the application. And then David, could you talk to the, some of the places you have your houses?
Yeah, I'd say either myself or maybe even Jeff might be able to speak to, you know, statewide.
Okay.
I can jump in.
Yeah, I think Stephanie was going to answer. So Stephanie, go ahead.
Sorry. Yes, I would say in terms of submitting the application, yes, that's a possibility. But, you know, we want to be very transparent about what we're doing and where we plan to do it. But yes, that is something we could do.
And to the second part.
I'm not sure I fully heard or understood the question, but one of the key things that
So I think the question is, are there other examples of recovery housing in neighborhoods? And in particular, the housing for males would be in the neighborhood with a recreation center?
Yes, you know, really these homes are designed to blend right into the community. And the most critical thing is that they're near surfaces. Because many people don't have transportation. So near the Turning Point, the hospital and other services is critical. One thing I wanted to mention earlier that I think supports this is each of the homes that are certified need to have a grievance and appeal process for the residents as well as community neighbors. They need to have a good neighbor policy. So really working with the residents to make sure that they fit into the neighborhood and that they're not engaging in activities that would cause concern. And then if the home is not really upholding those standards, a community member, we ask that they work with the home first. But they could file a concern with the Vermont Alliance for Recovery Residences. And we would come in with volunteers, look at it. And if they really weren't blending into the community properly, we could go as far as taking away their certification. So there's a real there's a real emphasis on being good community members and really blending into the community. I do know that a lot of the homes, each will operate differently. And John and Ralph, I think will speak to this. But, you know, oftentimes I think for David's programs, they don't allow individuals with a history of arson, obviously, and/or any sexual background. So if they're on the registry or that sort of thing. So if that was part of a concern in the neighborhood.
Thank you. I think
I'd just like to say, one of the reasons I like Gage Street is because of the rec center. Because part of our program will be getting memberships for our guys so they can go over and work out and, you know, get in shape. And most people that are coming out of rehab also need that attention also.
That's great. Thank you Ralph. Alex, did you want to add anything to this?
Actually, I'll close if that's okay, Jeannie?
Okay, all right, that works.
Thank you.
All right. Sarah, do you feel like your question was answered?
Yep. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Jim, you, and then what I'm going to do is go to attendees, if that's okay with everyone.
Sure. Thank you. I think this question is for Jeff. When it comes to the hub and spokes program, I may have read too far between the lines. You have a working model that's been successful, is that correct?
Well, you know, Vermont really is a national model for medically assisted treatment with the hub and spoke system. I don't know as far as Bennington. I know that there were some, John can speak to this, but some issue in terms of how it got rolled out. But now it's much easier for individuals to be able to obtain medically assisted treatment for substance use disorder.
Okay. And my second question for you is, you know, just for the general public and even for my understanding, can you flesh out for us in a general sense, what those spokes are that radiate from the hub?
Boy, I'm not an expert in this area. So, you know, Dave may have more information on that or John, for your specific community. I apologize. That's just not my area of expertise.
Alex, can you jump in on that and help us out? Because you know, you know the system in Bennington better than I, for sure.
Yeah, you know, and Jim, that's a great question. And I don't think as of right now, it's a much complicated question just because it's a, just because of the sake of time. So I think maybe that's something we can revisit offline and I'm happy to share that with you.
I do know that Savita is a spoke from the hub and also any primary doctor in town.
And I would just say in terms of recovery housing, the goal is to partner with all of, so whether it's the hub or people who are serving, you know, organizations or offices that are serving as the spokes. You know, the recovery homes will want to connect people living within them to the appropriate level of care within that hub and spoke model.
All right. That's great.
I just had, I just wanted to say one thing to Sarah's question about the homes and the location. It's probably a statement obvious, but that's what I do sometimes. But the folks that are in these homes are choosing to change their lives and be sober. They're subjecting themselves to testing, sporadic, unplanned testing by our house managers. Unlike the rest of the community, the folks that are in these homes are members seeking sobriety and long-term recovery from substances and alcohol. So just keep that in mind when we're thinking about these homes in our communities. And the folks that are there and they're fighting to change their lives to better. And they're really subjecting themselves to a lot of accountability, a lot.
Thank you. That's really helpful. I want to allow the community to ask their questions. I have Lon, then Dare, then Jackie. So, okay, so Lon, you should unmute.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. My name's Lon McClintock. I'm a resident in Shaftesbury. I own this Squire House with a partner, Nora Parsons. And I wanted to speak tonight because I think that when something like this is presented to a select board or any governmental body, we get a lot of talk about programs of sustainability and things like that. And I just wanted to speak on a more personal level as to why a recovery house could work. And every person who has had a substance abuse problem has their own sort of story. So all I can do is share with you my perspective and my story, rather than try to pretend to speak for anybody else. But I can tell you that the alcohol or other drugs is not the main problem. It's basically the way you cope with feeling that you don't belong, you're not accepted. You're not as genuine or real or as important as anyone else. And regardless of your background or how successful you've been in your life, if you feel those things, you feel them. And for me, leaving alcohol behind was, turned out to be the easiest part of the change. What I really needed to do was change my identity and rebuild my relationships based on a new belief system. A belief that I was as important as anyone else. I could things about me were appreciated and some things about me were not appreciated. You can ask my wife about that one. But seriously, it was really about building relationships, trusting those relationships and getting the foundation back. And so if people are going to be successful, I think in their recovery, it's important, you know, to do the checks and all that that they're describing. But the key is really building relationships that are meaningful and being in a supportive environment where you're establishing new relationships with people who are trying to establish the same patterns. That is not the cocktail hour, not going out to the bar at night to have something to drink, but other things that are going to be just as meaningful and provide real context. That's how people get better. And so you know, my family and siblings and all have had a real close relationship with substance abuse. And I believe this is an opportunity that fills the gap in our recovery services. That's very important. And so while I think you already support this, I think other people in the community need to understand that the value of this is that it provides people an opportunity to be valued, develop supportive relationships, a belief in themselves. And that's going to be the foundation for their recovery. So thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak.
Thank you so much Lon for sharing that. Up next is Dare.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just needed some clarification and I apologize if you said this and I missed it. I was hearing that moms in recovery can have kids with them in the housing. Is that correct?
Yeah, the Squire House was going to have, the downstairs would be five individuals living together. In a home setting, and then we're striving to have two apartments upstairs where they'd have separate access to those units and those units would. Afford us the opportunity to have mom and kids.
And what about the the male housing? Do, I mean, because there are single dads, right? Are, is that going to be a a safe space for kids to be?
Yes, it will be a, it will be a safe space for them to come to visit. They wouldn't be living there.
I see. And another piece I was wondering about is, say, you have a Bennington resident that is in need of recovery housing. Has family here, say it's dad, and wants to be able to have those visits with kids. But is priority going to be given to that Bennington resident to go into one of the Bennington houses? Or are they going to be sent to Burlington? Does that make sense?
Yeah, Dare, I'm guessing you're talking more for the V four homes. You know, when we, when we evaluate somebody's application, really what we're looking at is. Where are the openings and where is the best fit? In the situation that you just described, the best fit is clearly going to be in Bennington. And so if there was an opening, that's where that individual would go.
Okay, thank you very much.
And just to speak to the children's piece, it's it's complicated. Children in recovery residences is absolutely. Challenging and and we're working right now on a home in Berry, specifically like the group. Atmosphere where children would be able to live in the home itself. And there's just, there's a lot of layers and a lot of components and. You know, there's very, very few of them in the state of Vermont as it is, like maybe only one. And, you know, it's, it's, it's a pretty big challenge that we certainly will look to, you know, resolve over time and and I hope that we're able to have homes for parents with children. Right? Like not, not women, not, but but parents with children in a safe space. So it's something we want to work towards the long term, but. To Ralph's point, it's just really challenging to have them living in a permanent way as of right now.
Thank you.
And the other thing too, Dare, is, you know, when working with people early in recovery, you really want them to have a focus on their recovery. And then had, you know, the family members and other people that are involved in their lives to kind of come in gradually so that they can be successful working on themselves.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to move on to Jackie.
Hello, everyone. Jackie Kelly from Bennington. I have basically two questions. My first is about logistics. You've spoken tonight about putting people in an area where they can recover. And at out of the way of of what they were used to before. And I realize how important this is. But I ask you, when you put people down in the downtown area. Aren't you putting them next to the sources of their addiction, next to, you know, where they can can get their fixes? I know. Couple of the streets down there are the very streets where you can get cocaine, you can get other things very readily. It, there's three bars right in the area. So that's one, one question. The second question I have is, when the town forms a partnership. Why is it always Shire's Housing? Haven't we allowed other people to bid on other, on projects like this? Those are my two questions.
And just quickly, I'll I'll try and answer the one about logistics. What we do in a recovery house atmosphere and in a recovering community, which Bennington has a very good recovering community also, is we connect. Connection is probably the single most important thing for these people that are coming out and getting a chance again. And we will be instructive, you know, along that process so that they are trying to access cocaine or other drugs. On whatever street they may go on. You know, their their different way of life, you know, will develop because they will be around people. Both volunteers and staff folks that, you know, are in recovery themselves. You know, it's a peer centered program at the turning point. And I know David's stuff, you know, that everybody is helping each other and making those connections so that people can be successful in their recovery.
Yeah, Ralph's absolutely correct. I mean, it's all about connection and it's all about peer to peer support and accessing resources. The only thing that I would say in addition to it on on that subject is just that. You know, it doesn't really matter where you go and you could be in the most rural areas of the state of Vermont, there are still issues with substances. You know, people are able to access substances. And frankly, as somebody who's in recovery myself, like. I can drive by and see somebody on the street and I know, like, in my gut, whether that's somebody I'm going to be able to connect with and get substances or not, right? Just the same way I know in my gut, like when I drive by a church and see people hanging outside in the parking lot. Whether that's probably, you know, a recovery meeting or not. And so it's not about hiding. It's not about living life in fear. It's not about avoiding substances for the rest of your life as somebody in recovery. It's about learning the skills and the coping mechanisms and developing the relationships and the resilience. To be able to stay sober even in the face of those things, in the face of substances being present and and those challenges. But more so in the face of the challenges of life, you know, and the hurdles that we all face. And. And I think Lon spoke really well to the idea that the problem isn't the substances. Right? The 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 problem is the layers underneath that, you know, and and that that is my, substances are my coping mechanism. Substances are the things that allow me to feel comfortable in my own skin and allow me to function in society. And how do I learn to be able to do those things without substances? Those are the skills and and in addition to all the life skills that we're trying to help people be able to practice and learn.
Thank you. Shannon, do you, Shannon, do you or Stephanie want to speak to Jackie's question about why Shires?
Sure, I, well, I'll let Stephanie speak as well, but hi Jackie. I, so. Basically, you know, the state, the community development program is looking to grant funding to organizations that have a lot of experience. With housing development and affordable housing is is one of, you know, the community development program is funded through housing and urban development. At the federal level. So that's one of the key goals of the program. And so Shire's Housing is really. Our only housing developer in that sense of new properties. That's in Bennington proper. We also, there are some, some other agencies we've worked with such as Neighbor Works. That's working on rental rehab. And I think for one of the first times ever, there have been, there is a private developer, Hale Resources. That's also worked on affordable housing. But in general, the state is really looking to work with an organization that has that experience such as Shires does.
And I can just add to that, too. When I started this, this journey a couple of years ago, I I started making connections at the state and at the federal level with a lot of the money that's coming in. And it has some really great conversations, very supportive conversations, but it became very clear to me. That they're saying, okay, who's this John Rogers and where's he going to be in five years? And including Leahy's office, he said, John, go get a housing partner, you know, get someone that knows how to get you through this grant process that. Will be there and have an organization to have the experts, not only to be there to get the grant, but to really. Execute the grant and comply with the grant. And so Stephanie's on the COC as am I, and that's, we knew each other through that, through the continuum of care. And I, I reached out to her and she was very, very supportive to help us and Ralph as well. So. We we need her for getting the grants and and, you know, and really delivering on the grants long term.
Stuart, did you want to jump in here?
Yes, thank you. I think Jackie, the the way you phrased your question is this, as if. The town of Bennington went out looking for partners to do this. These funds are available. They are available only through municipalities. We, we don't go out and look for people such as Stephanie or or John or these folks who are here tonight. They come to us looking for our help to access the funds. We are simply the. In a sense, kind of the siphon through which the monies come and then they are turned over. To management of the particular projects. So we're, we're not out there bidding these projects. We're simply the funding mechanism, the way the monies flow to the community and then back out to the people who now become our partners because they've asked to be.
Great, thank you. That that was actually really helpful. Next up is a caller with. Last three numbers of one nine six. You will need to press star six to unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
It's Mike Buffle from Bennington.
Hi, Mike.
When I first read this in the paper, it didn't sound like a good location, the one that you're using, the two of them that you're using. But definitely is a need in this community for something like this. And then I listened to the explanation from all the people you've got together there. And it clarified a lot of things in my mind. This community needs some help, especially for those who really want to get out of this. Drug triangle that they've built around themselves. And I think we need to kind of bite the bullet, give this a test, see if it works. I personally known at least five women over the last few years. That have died of overdoses. And the saddest part is. They've all left kids and little kids and it really breaks your heart. So. I've changed my mind on this. I would like to help if I can. But the question I have for Stephanie is, are you going to be there with Shires? When these people do graduate from these programs to help them get housing and keep housing. So that they don't slide back into the abyss of drugs.
Stephanie, unmute yourself.
That's a really good question and our mission is to provide quality affordable housing to members of our community. And in partnering with John and with Ralph, this is part of what we see as a long term solution is to provide housing. That's what we do. And yes, absolutely. I think we we would be part of the long term solution in that way.
But if these people for the first few years after they get out of this program can't make. Quite enough money to fit into Shires. Is there some other grants that you could be going for for this program itself?
Yeah, there are grants available and I think we would work with John and with Ralph to determine if there is someone that needs that assistance. If they need a VSHA voucher, for instance, or, you know, some, an apartment that has an attached voucher to it. We would certainly work with them.
One other idea for you people to make the community grab hold of this is. We're going to now have open select board meetings. The firehouse will be available. I think you folks all ought to get together. Maybe within a short amount of time before you really go at this. And have an open public discussion. And calm the nerves of the community and answer the questions in person. I will go out now because I know a lot of people that read it like I did and they're absolutely against it. And I'm just going to say, what if it was your kid, you know?
Right. Yeah, I don't think there are any of us who haven't been impacted in some way by a substance use disorder. So.
All right, well, thank you for your, thank you very much for your reference.
Just to build on that, that was a great question. To build on that, in addition to Shires, I mean, we have other organizations in town that are also working hard to help folks get into housing. You know, we've got Brock, we've got Pathways Vermont, who are starting to to move across the state. They, they work. With folks who are hard to, hard to get into housing. So. Shire certainly is a leader in our community, but there are other organizations too. So we're going to be plugged in with all of them. You know, to help these folks transition from the, from the, from the recovery residence into full time residence.
Well, we're all, we're all members of the continuum of care and I I see that being, you know, the vehicle to get people into permanent housing for the transition from recovery.
Right. All right. So next up is zero two five on the phone. So you will need to press star six to. Unmute yourself.
Computer, is it raining?
Jackie. Is oh two five available? You have to, you will, you will need to press star six. There you go.
Hello?
Yes, you're on.
Hi, Nancy White Bennington. Please clarify, is there going to be staffing 24/7? Will someone from outside of the state be able to come stay in one of these houses? And and please explain why Turning Point won't be running both of the houses. Because I would really like to have the control and the accountability be local.
Ralph, do you want to start or do you want me to? Okay, so there will not be staffing 24/7 and the reason is because it's people's homes and so we really believe that it's their. You know, a home. So they should have a family like atmosphere and they should be able to, you know, cultivate a culture within the home that. That is appropriate to them. Now, there are staff available 24/7. There is a dedicated house manager to that property as well as several other. Support staffs that will be available at any point, day or night. And local volunteers from John and the churches and and things like that that will be available to support people. You know, yes, people can apply from out of state. Whether there's an opening and whether the home in Bennington would be the right fit or not depends on it. It's all on a case by case basis. And then in terms of why Turning Point's not operating both homes. I mean, I'll just say that V four's mission is to be statewide. We want to have recovery housing in all of the communities that have recovery centers. And so our goal i- is to go statewide. You know, John and and folks from Bennington approached us about opening a home in Bennington and, you know, that fit in with our mission. So it's what, you know, we decided to pursue.
Just to add to that, I mean, I did a lot of research, talking with folks that are in, in, you know, in, of influence in the recovery community before consistently came back as one of. If not the best from everyone as far as operating as recovery residences. So I wanted to go and work with the best. As far as being local, I have, like I mentioned earlier, I've been here for over two decades in Bennington County, raised my kids here and I've now joined the V four board so that we have. We have influence with this organization through through my board attendance. So. It, and it will be staffed not only with the four staff, but also community members. So we're looking, and that's why we're working through local churches. To find men and women who have a heart for folks, who have a background with recovery that can be sponsors and really, you know, help, help folks. In the community and be present.
We're counting on being able to hire a local house manager. Like John has assured me that there are people in the area that are, you know, qualified and and wanting to do this type of a position. So. You know, in addition to all the other stuff, you know, it may be small, but you know, we hope to be an employer of of people in Bennington.
And at the men's program, the Turning Point will be running, we will have a live in house manager that will be there. We also will be, you know, with wrap services, much like what David does at his residences where, you know, there's a lot of people that are involved with these folks. On a daily basis. I mean, there's not going to be a day that goes by where somebody, you know, either from Turning Point or the recovering community or one of John's. Connections in the faith community would be at the houses. And of course, we would be open also with David, because I know in some of his other houses, they do reach out for recovery coaching at some of the other Turning Point centers in Vermont. So we would definitely be there. This is not, I want to make sure that people know, this is not in any way a competition where I'll do this and you do that. This has been going for at least the last year with David. And for me, it's been about two years with Jeffrey Moreau. This is a team effort. And the only way this is going to be work and work and be successful in our community is if we're one team, you know, not divvied up.
Thank you. That, again, that was very, very helpful. I'm going to move back to, I'm going to move back to the select board side and panelists. So Jim, you are up and then Alex. You are up. All right.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear? Okay. Thank you. You know, I'm just sitting here thinking about. All these folks and the members of the community and really what motivates us all. and really what motivates us all. And I think it's probably safe to say that it's compassion. It's what makes us want to make the lives of these people better. And I've come to know people, a very well-respected lawyer in this town whose son became addicted, and to children of a lesser god who became addicted. Addiction doesn't care who you are, where you come from, what your economic status is. But when we reach out to try to make our community better, this is about compassion. And that's my closing remark.
Thank you, Jim. That was really lovely. So, Alex, would you like to speak?
Yeah, sure. So, for those that do not know who I am, my name's Alex Figaro, and I'm the project director for the Bennington OB/Response Team. And I've had the luxury of working closely with John Rogers and Ralph Bennett and Stephanie and Jeff, and, you know, as we, you know, kind of build out, you know, what does recovery housing look like for our community? And so, this is something we've been working on since 2018, and it's been amazing to kind of see the fruits of this labor just kind of bloom, right? And so, I just want to kind of publicly just thank every single one of you for your hard work, and just to see the partnerships that have been able to flourish through all this. You know, and so, folks are listening, this is very, really partnered-centered and the collaboration, and that's what really has been making it successful, is those key partnerships and collaboration with just other community members and stakeholders. And so, thank you for all your hard work, and, you know, I'm excited to see this develop. And, you know, the one thing I wanted to comment on, I can't remember who the, the, it was one of the public comments, you know, this model that we have, you know, the partnership with V4 and even Turning Point, you know, really allows us to serve more people in our community, and so, and that's the one thing that I think is important. You know, we know the need, and, and I think with this model, we'll be able to meet that need. And it's just a start. You know, I think long-term vision is really to be able to develop this recovery ecosystem. John Rogers has, you know, been kind of the forefront, and same with Ralph. And so, you know, this is just step one in terms of a long-term plan and process, so, thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Bruce?
I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you. Yes.
At long list, I would move that the select board approve this application and authorize the chair to sign on our behalf.
Who seconded?
That was Tom.
Tom, thank you.
Jim did too. Give it to Jim.
Okay, whichever.
Alright, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay.
So, I'd actually just like to see if I could amend that, or discuss this.
We have to vote on, we, we're voting on this one.
Or, or just, or a quick discussion before that?
Okay.
So, I, I, I would be in favor of just a discussion, possibly for the first application of the $500,000 to purchase a former property in Bennington for use as recovery housing for male participants at the Turning Point Centers, and possibly having community members weigh in on the location.
I think you're going to have to make a separate motion. I don't think that's an amendment. Do you want to make that mo, do you want to, do you want to?
I, I'm actually, I would not be in favor of having that incorporated into my motion.
Exactly. That's why I'm saying, I think it needs to be a separate motion. Do you want to, um, do you want to pull your motion for a moment, Bruce? Or do we want to go out and vote? We were in the middle of voting.
We were in the middle of voting, but I, you know, I'm happy to do whatever the chair wants to do to make this, facilitate this.
Um.
I would speak against Sarah's suggestion, not because I'm against.
Sure, or, I guess, or have a discussion with the community members. I'd be in favor of that as well.
I, I'm not, I'm not in favor of it either. I think, let's finish voting on this, and then, I, but the thing is, if we vote on this, then we are voting on the resolution with the, with.
And as it was written.
Which is what, so, so the, the motion that is on the table from Bruce includes the addresses of the two residents where the housing would take place if, if the application is successful. So, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Any abstentions, please indicate. Alright, the ayes have it, so, thank you very much. The resolution has passed, and we move forward. Yes.
Just, remember, this is the application for funding. Each of these, each of these facilities will still have to meet the land use regulations in the neighborhood in which they will reside. So, I mean, this, this is, this is not the end-all. This simply gets the funding mechanism underway.
Tom?
Uh, yeah, because the vote wasn't unanimous, don't we have to do a roll call under the?
We do. We do. Alright, thank you. We're going to take a break. We're going to take a short break after this, so we can all get rehydrated.
Jeannie, Sarah has her hand up. I'm not sure if it's appropriate, her question's appropriate now or later.
Uh, I think we have to take a roll call vote, and then we will, and then we will go to any additional questions. So, let me call, let's see, can I remember the order? I know it. Um, it is, Bruce, how do you vote?
Aye.
Gary, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jean, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jim, how do you vote?
Absolutely aye.
Sarah, how do you vote?
Nay.
Tom, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jeannie votes aye. Alright, so, so the ayes have it. Sarah, please, your question?
Uh, yeah, I just, I just want to ask that my comments are going to be noted, because it was very hesitant, and I'm very hesitant to vote no, but I just wanted to make it known that I wanted the residents know, the residents to be, would, to residents be weighed in. Sorry, I'm still a little frazzled about voting no.
It's, Sarah, it's okay, and I, and I appreciate you, uh, you making sure that everybody knows why you voted the way you voted. So, good. Stuart, your hand is up.
Oh, it's still up. I'm sorry, that's.
Oh, that's an old hand. Okay.
It's an old hand, and I am, I have old hands.
Alright, so, thank you, everyone. I think let's take a three-minute break, and then we'll be back. Okay? And thank you to everyone that voted this evening.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
I broke my toe Tuesday, Saturday night. It is like the fifth time I broke in a baby toe.
Really?
I, I break baby toes, and luckily, this time, I mean, it's completely blue. I broke it, usually I break it by separating out the baby toe away from the rest of the foot, which is incredibly painful, but this time, I just like slammed it.
Yep.
So, standing up, I didn't think about this. Oh my God.
I hear you.
Oh, oh, but anyway.
Ouch.
Yeah, no, I, it's crazy. I don't know, I don't know what it is about buying baby toes.
I don't know. You should start wearing keens. They protect your toes.
I, I wear, I was, I grew up in the South. I was barefoot.
Yeah, I know, I was too, in New Jersey.
But now, I always wear shoes, and we were in DC, and I didn't bring bedroom shoes, and I.
So, do you like stub your toe and it breaks?
Well, usually what I do, it's really awful, is my foot separates in a door jam. Like, I'll catch part of my, I'll catch my toe on the edge of it. It's horrible. But I've done it so many times, it's, it's horrible. Now, this time I stubbed it.
I've done it twice.
You can't walk. Who knew?
No, you absolutely can't walk.
No, okay.
And there really isn't anything anybody can do.
Right, so, oh, if, if, if this is on Cat TV, let's edit this out.
Yeah.
Too late, too late. It's already gone viral.
Alright, let's see.
Okay, I will be very quick.
So, let's see, so, Josh, are we ready?
But that was, it was a great presentation, this last one.
It was ver, it was great. I, I learned so much. I think it was really informative. Yeah. Josh, are we ready with Cat TV, or are we just rolling whenever? Okay, no problem. Okay. Alright, so, welcome back to the select board meeting of June 14th, Setrue. And we are now on item number seven, which is community policing update, and we have three items tonight. One is the first reading of the collaborative partnership policy, which we're all very excited about, and the second, two things Jean and I will talk about, the revised proposal and the NACO scope of work. So, Bruce, why don't you, why don't you start off?
Sure. Just to, I'm just going to say a couple of things. This, I believe, is one of the really central policies that we've been working on that sort of encapsures the essence of what we've been working on. The stuff that isn't read is material that was added as the result of suggestions from our town attorney. So, part, lawyers are very finicky about what a partnership means, and so, this means what partnerships mean in the ordinary sense of that term. And yes, I am aware of a couple of typos, but if you want to send me those, please feel free to do so. I won't take it personally. But don't spend any time tonight telling me about typos. The only other thing I will add is, a question has been raised, and I think it's a good one, about the second section, which is the policy section, and why is it directing the Bennington Police Department, and should it only, should partnerships only go one way? And the answer really is a logistical one, and that is, we make policy for the Bennington Police Department, not for community organizations. They make policy for themselves, so we don't make policy that requires them to do anything. What this is really doing is saying to ourselves and to the police department, or reminding the police department that they need to be in relationship and partnership with other community agencies, and there's a particular way to pull that off. So, that's, that's it in a nutshell. You have two weeks to talk, to send information to me, or actually a little less than two weeks. It's been up since Thursday. I will need to have any comments you might want to have. Our next meeting is the 28th, but this will be going into the packet by the 22nd. So, that's all I need to say.
Great. Does anyone on the board have any questions or comments about this policy tonight? Not seeing any, any attendees want to weigh in? Okay, alright, then let's move, then let's move on. I think it is really good work, Bruce. Do you want to, do you have the list of people that worked on this policy?
Uh, no, I don't, but I will have them for next week, or for two weeks from now.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you for reminding me.
Yep, no, I forgot to. Alright, so then, the next two things are connected. So, what I'm going to do is talk just briefly about the, the revised proposal for the process to create a community safety and equity board, and then Jean is going to talk about the NACO scope of work, and we'll take questions from the select board on each of these, and then, once we both finish, we'll also take questions from the, from the community. So, this is a revised proposal. I think 15 different individuals or organizations weighed in. The, the comments were great. They clearly showed people's interest in moving forward on this, and a lot of good clarifying questions and comments. So, I do think that this, this, this proposal is much stronger for it. I do, the, the proposal is proposing a task force of up to 11 community members who will develop the details of a town safety and equity decision-making board with four areas of focus. Those areas of focus are recommendations on training and collaboration, policy and procedure, review of complaints, and data analysis. I just, I do want to reiterate, because we were asked a couple times why, why the proposal looks like it does. We, the community policing task force has done, has tried to do their homework. We have done a lot of reading, and we have talked with a lot of organizations. And those organizations include the ICP, they include the Attorney General's Civil Rights Division, NACO, the Vermont Partnership for Fairness and Diversity, Vermont State Police, and then we talked with a lot of different communities. We, we were able to talk with staff in Ferguson, Missouri, with staff in Athens, Georgia, and then with a, a, a number of people around the state who are involved in safety committees, equity committees, review boards. And the reason that we've done all this is that we really did want to hear what the process each of these communities used was, what they learned, and, you know, what we could, what we could do better the first time around. So, you know, people have been very generous with their time, and I feel like, you know, I feel like the proposal we're giving, presenting to you tonight is, is, is a strong one. One point of clarification, the six-month window includes everything from the training to the development of the recommendations, to the presentation of the recommendations, and then, if there's follow-up. And then, uh, if there's follow-up that the select board feels should be done based on a public comment period, then it also gives time for that. So it is inclusive. If we, we are hoping that we can move forward on both the proposal and the scope of work tonight. And if we're able to do that, then we would have NACOL meet with us on Thursday, July 15th at 6:00 PM. Uh, and at present, that's over Zoom. So are there questions, are there any questions from the select board that the community policing work group can answer?
Can I just say, you didn't, you didn't, I didn't know if you wanted to touch on the timeline, since it is part of the proposal?
Oh, yeah. Let, oh, let me, well, yes. So we did revise the timeline. Uh, assuming that we can move forward tonight, then the, the draft timeline in here is one that we would be able, we do feel like is, is reasonable to, to accomplish. Were there other things you wanted to say on that, Jean?
Yeah, I just, um, I guess I just wanted to say, and I was gonna say it after I was done my, my little presentation on NACOL, but I'll just say it now, you know, we've been criticized in the past for the slowness of this process. And I guess I just want to say that the, it's not that we want to be slow, it's that we're choosing to be, I don't want to use the word slow, deliberate and thoughtful, and that's why this is taking so long. Because our goal is to get it right, not do it fast. So July to next May is a long time, but it's intentional because we, because of the steps we're taking, the research we've done, the involvement we're getting from a lot of community members, and all of that takes time, but it's the right thing to do. So.
Thank you, Jean.
Yep.
So Sarah, you had a question?
Yes. So unfortunately, I did not, I had looked over this probably about an hour before the meeting. It wasn't included in my packet. Um, so are, is I able to see the citizens' comments that you received?
Um, we did not include the citizens' comments. What we did do last meeting was we, Jean, um, uh, what's it called? Summarize. Jean summarized the comments that she had received. We're happy to do a summary of these comments as well. Um, the, uh, that was not included. We did not include this in the packet because it felt like every, literally every single point that was raised was addressed.
Yeah.
But we're happy to do that. But the packet online for sure does have the, the proposal. And I'm sorry that the, that the paper version didn't.
Mine did, mine did.
Well, mine did too.
That's okay. And also I think, um, one of the, one of the comments that I heard was the seven point, the seven and a half hours of training does kind of exclude a lot of people. So that's one of my concerns. And, um, is it possible to not have the, I, I don't know. I think this is, I go back and forth on this. The July 15th Zoom, is that possible to be in person?
Um, well, it actually could be now. When we originally were checking dates with NACOL, they are just, uh, dispersed, dispersed organization. They're, they don't have one central building. And so the people that were, uh, meeting with us, one lived in Indianapolis and the other lives in Cambridge, Mass. It now turns out that unless we want to wait till August to do this, that, uh, we will only be met by the person who is, the, the, the presentation will be by the individual who lives in Cambridge, Mass. So we will go back to him and ask, um, at, when Jean gets into the scope of work, there, there is travel in there. Um, so that, so that is a possibility. But, um, you know, I think, uh, we'll, we'll check in because, yeah, originally we were, Indianapolis just seemed like out of our, out of our price range. Plus, at that time, we were still all on Zoom. Um, in terms of the training, one of the lessons learned by every single community that we talked with is that you want to make sure that everyone understands how the criminal justice system works before you start. You can't do this kind of work in a vacuum. And one of the communities we talked to, um, had varying levels of expertise or familiarity among the group, their task force. And what they were constantly having to do was back up and then do that tiny bit of training, back up, do, you know? So the, the intention here is not to preclude anyone from being on the task force. If you look at the timeline and the amount of time it's gonna take, anyone that does this will need to be able to devote the time that this will require. The task force, the, um, the criminal justice training, some of that could be done on, on Zoom. Not, probably not all of it, uh, but some of it. But we're talking about three meetings. So if two of them end up on Zoom and one's in person, I, you know, someone would have to figure, would have to figure that out. In terms of the other meeting time, it's, um, the NACOL envisioned this as being a hybrid model that sometimes you'd be meeting in person and sometimes you'd be meeting on Zoom, at least with them. And they've, they've worked in both, uh, they've, they've worked with groups in both ways. And they do think that there is something to be said by doing some on ground and some online. So. Does that answer your question, Sarah?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's just one concern I've, I've heard over and over is the training, seven and a half hour training without, you know, some people. So yeah, I think, yeah, it does, but.
We could share, we can share the rest of the comments. We'll summarize the rest of the comments. That was not, that was not a common thing. Just, just, just saying that. Tom, I think you have your hand up.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I see the changes that you made and I, I like, uh, most of them. I'm still a little concerned about the possibility that we may be excluding a certain segment of our population just because of some of the barriers that, that exist for them. You know, a, a, a single mom might not have childcare. A person with a disability might not have adequate transportation or something like that. Is that something we can discuss and try to improve on, or is it something you're already discussing?
Yeah. So Tom, the, the task, once the task force, in a sense, is, is self-organizing. I mean, they will have to, they, if they meet at 2:00 in the morning, that's gonna be difficult for whoever the staff member is that's supporting them. But, but the, the task force is self-organizing. So one of the things that we do hope that people will feel free to do is say, you know, childcare is an, is an issue for me. So if we can do it when I have, you know, if we can set the time so that I have, you know, grandma or I have school, or I have, you know, the three hours of, of preschool that I have, you know, available, we'll try and do that. Um, I think the, for 11 people to do this, they are going to have to be able to work together well. Um, and so, you know, I, one of, one of the tasks of the task force will be thinking about how they can set up their meetings so that they are at times, places, and fashions that are going to allow for everyone to feel like they can, they can be, you know, fully, fully involved. There's some things, you know, one of the questions that we were asked was, are you willing to teach people how to use a computer? The answer is no. We do not have the time to teach someone how to use a computer. We do not, you know, that, like, that, that will be a requirement, that, that you can do research online, that you can, um, you know. So, so some things, I think much of this is self-organizing. Bruce, I think you have your hand up. You're probably wanting to address this.
I do, I do. And I, I think it, Tom, I, I agree with your concern. I, it's been one of the concerns of mine about this. I also think that, I mean, here's, here's what I would hope. And I, I hope that if, if you're a person in this community, and, and I'll say this again, whenever anybody asks me, uh, if you're a person in this community and you want to be a participant in this, and yes, Sarah, I think you really do need to be engaged enough in this to have the training, because everybody that we spoke with said, you gotta do that. But I would also hope that, let's say, let's say we, there was a person who is disabled or needs transportation because they, because their disability, for instance, doesn't allow them to self-transport, um, and they need transportation. I would hope we would figure, we're going to be naming these people, the board is. So I would hope, this would be my, I will be advocating for making sure that persons who have been, uh, interviewed and been named and want to be on this, we'll make it possible for them to do this. Now, Jeannie's right, there are limitations. But I do think, I think we can make it so that a transportation, it shouldn't be an issue. You know, uh, I think there's, I think there are ways around doing this. And I hope it, it's sort of a team building for the, for the, for the task force to, to make sure that their members can actively participate. That's what I wanted to say.
Thank you, Bruce. Jean, did you have something on this topic as well?
Yeah, sort of related. Um, so, uh, like we did with the discussion boards many months ago when we were, when we were, um, soliciting input from the community, maybe the task force would come up with ways to allow community members to participate while maybe not being officially on the task force. They will come up with a mechanism to allow people to participate in some way, to make sure that they're being heard. So, you know, you, you don't have to be on the, so you wouldn't have to be on the task force to still participate in some way.
Great, thank you. Um, Jim, do you have a question, comment?
A comment. Um, you know, uh, I think there's a lot of room for versatility with respect to, uh, the concerns that Tom and Bruce voiced. And, uh, that is, you know, if we want single mothers who need childcare or people with disability to want to participate, but there are hurdles that they just can't overcome, should we throw the Zoom baby out with the Zoom water? Couldn't be, couldn't there be a hybrid of the use of Zoom and, uh, a, a public meeting?
There can be. And in fact, um, in order for the staff, the staff member from Indianapolis to take part, she, she is planning to join us by Zoom on a regular basis. So yes, that's a, that's a good suggestion.
Thanks.
Any other, any other questions or comments right now, Jim? That's an old hand, right? Yes. All right. So Jean, do you want to talk about the, the NACOL scope of work?
Yeah. And if, I mean, in the, because of the time, I'm not gonna go into the detail that I probably would have. Um, this, if someone wants to look at this scope of work, it is included in the selectable materials that are posted on the, on the website. Um, I just wanted to give, um, those of you who don't know, it's a mouthful, um, that what NACOL is. And it is the National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement. So it's a national organization and they really are the premier, um, organization that will be guiding us through this process. The first piece of the scope of work is a one-hour initial training program for the town of Bennington. And what that means is not just us that are on this screen right now, um, but anyone. Anyone in the town will be able to participate and, and follow along that, that training piece. And that's, that's the July 15th meeting, correct, Jeannie? Yes. So everyone who are out there that's, that's, to just jot down July 15th, that's when that's gonna happen. I guess at this point, we don't know if it'll be Zoom or in person. They will formulate and deliver a six-hour training program for, for the town of Bennington. That is for the task force, um, to get everybody up to speed on what that means and all the complexities of that. The third piece of their scope of work will provide up to, not necessarily all, 16 hours of support and assistance to the task force members. So in other words, working with the task force once they're seated, um, to guide them through their work. Um, and we get all of that, including travel and a technical assistance for $8,575, which, um, we thought was a bargain. It's a, they're just a tremendous, um, organization. And I really, really pleased that we found them and that they're gonna be holding our hands through the process.
Questions for Jean? Or comments on the scope of work?
And like I said, there's a lot more detail in this. Um, I just hit the highlights.
All right. I'm wondering, is there anyone, um, among the attendees? Whoops, panelist. Tom, you raise your hand.
Uh, yeah, thanks. Just a quick question. Um, you mentioned, for example, that the, the first meeting would be with the, the NACOL rep on Zoom. I see they, they, the fees include up to five in-person trips. If they don't end up using all five trips, do we not pay a full 23.75?
Correct. This is, we, we ask them to, to put in some extra time. So the, yes, if, if we don't use it, they're not gonna bill us for it. So this is maximum. And I, so I, the, the NACOL has been absolutely excellent to work with. They are, um, everyone that we've talked to in the organization is wonderful. They are practitioners, um, and they, um, they come with a lot of experience. And they are very interested in making sure that what we end up is right-sized for our community and that it meets the needs of our community. And, and that was, I think, really, um, it, it was, it's just been really refreshing to look at the ways they've worked with different communities around the country.
Yeah. And Bruce, do you mind if I jump in here just for a second?
No.
Okay. Um, and what they have is the experience of working with communities where they have not had, well, probably the final outcome was great, but they've watched communities stumble along the way. And they'll be able to guide us around all of those potholes, which we wouldn't know were there. So.
Go ahead, Bruce.
I'm, I'm wanting to know whether the chair would like one motion or two.
I'd love one motion, actually.
Allow me to try.
Okay.
I, I would move that the board adopt the task force proposal and the NACOL scope of work. That's, I think, all I need. And, and if there's a second, I'll just speak very quickly to it.
Jim, were you seconding that?
Sure.
I didn't mean to put words in your mouth. Sorry. Okay. All right. And, okay, so you have some discussion for this?
I, I just, I just wanted to, to reiterate, um, you know, from the very beginning, when we began talking about this and talking to the Civil Rights Division of the State AG's office, the very first, uh, group that he pointed us to is NACOL. When I went out and talked with almost anybody, the very first group, they said, have you talked to NACOL? Have you gone to the NACOL website? Ladies and gentlemen, there isn't an organization that has more, um, experience and, um, more, uh, credentials than this organization when setting up, in setting up civilian oversight of law enforcement. So I hope we can be unanimous on this one. Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? All right. Thank you all. I think, um, we will let them. All right. Thank you all. I think we will let them know that this is a go and check in on whether we can do this in person. If we do it in person, we absolutely would have Cat TV cover it so that anyone not available can see it. So, lovely. So, next up is Communications Coordinator. This is like, like, this is the meeting, this is the meeting. All right, so Communication Coordinator. So, Stuart has given us a memo and a new job description. You'll notice we have a new title. Communication Coordinator better addressed the, the role of this individual, and then based on the conversation that, and, and comment that Tom gave us last meeting, we have split out the website upgrade redo piece from the Communication Coordinator position. So, I'm hoping we can approve this position so that Stuart can post it as soon as possible. Stuart, do you have, do you want to add anything on this?
No, no, I think, I, I think the memorandum covers it all, Jean. You know, we, we, we had the confusion initially that this was a public relations position, and that's specifically not what it is. So, I think with, with that clarification, this position will, will, will help us improve our communication capabilities. That's the real role. And my goal would be to bring this person onboard before we update the website, so that they are in-depth involved in its revision, and, and be able to work very comfortably with it. So, tho- those are my comments.
Great, thank you. Jean, you have your hand up?
Yeah, Stu, I'm really sorry to ask this now. Should another duty be to not only create regular social media postings, but to monitor our social media? I, I didn't, I'd like, I'd like the board's wisdom on this, too.
Are you talking about monitoring individual employees' social monitoring?
No, monitoring what people are posting. Like our Facebook page, you know, people can, people can post. I just know how ugly Facebook can get, at least from what I hear. I don't see it, but from what I hear.
I'm, I'm not sure this person's going to be able to clean up Facebook for us.
I don't know. This is what I don't know. Shannon does, she's got her hand up.
Yeah, Shannon, go ahead.
Just so that everyone knows, we do have staff that do that. So, Beth Antonioni from the Town Office, who's the Community Development Assistant, is currently doing that. And that's why we don't have a lot of trolls that you're reading on her, on our Facebook page and whatnot. So, you know, we will, I, we just, Beth and I just went through her evaluation. She's been picking up a lot more work, just as, you know, there's more need to, to be on the town's website and social media. So, I, I think whoever comes into this role, we would work with them to figure out how they also get support. You know, some support stuff, and that could be one of the lists.
And, and my, my goal would be to have this person do just that. I mean, as, as these questions come in, Shannon is right, Beth is now the one that currently grabs those questions and sends them out to the appropriate person for an answer. That would be one of the roles of this individual. So that we have a, an individual taking all of the questions in from all of the various websites and dealing effectively with them, and efficiently, for that matter.
Great. Gary, go ahead.
The question I have is, do, do you think it needs a full-time person to do this work?
I do. I do. I mean, we're, we're talking about, we currently contract out management of the police website. We currently contract with an individual to manage our website, the bit, planning and zoning website, and the town clerk website. And so, and then we have Beth, who, who is, who is sort of the, right now, the the focal point of all of the questions that come in and, and how we get that message out. And, and so, if we're going to do this effectively, and if we're going to do this timely, I really do think we need a full-time person, someone who can actually reach out to the various department heads and, and grab their information, perhaps sometimes pull it from them, so that we can get that information out. Because we, we don't do a very good job of, of getting the stuff out. When we're asked directly, we're asked a, a question or a FOIA request, yes, we respond, but it does take us time to gather the information, gather it, make sure it's accurate when we send it out, and then send it out. And I, I would expect that this individual would handle all of those kinds of tasks pretty much on a, on a daily basis.
So, Stu, the other question I had is just, we're, we're taking funds, well, we, we have funds that we're paying for someone to do this now. Will those, will those funds then be redirected to this person's?
Actually, no, we're, we're going to be paying this person out of, out of excess funds that we have budgeted for in, in part of our Recreation Administration budget that have not been utilized. So, we will use those funds. What, what we do here, Gary, and I, I don't think people understand it fully, when we get a new requirement handed to us from the Select Board, or where the community demands something new and different from us, and the way we handle ourselves, we load that onto existing personnel. We, we, we don't pay them more to do it. We simply say, here's a new responsibility for you. Go. And to this point, I, I'll give my staff a ton of credit. We have handled just about everything new that you folks or previous Select Boards have thrown at us, that the community throws at us, and, and we've done it well, but it, it takes a ton of time for people, and, and they do it. And, and thank God I have staff that have the capability to take, keep taking that on, but, you know, people in this office, many of them work more than a 40-hour week. And, and we've been working with flex time and things like that to help compensate them for the extra time they're putting in. But when the chips are down, my staff take on these extra roles and perform them very well, but I, I just, there's, I don't pay them more to do that. We simply ask that they do more.
And, and I do think that the, there are only seven or eight sort of manager-level individuals in the town office, and what happens right now, the community policing is, is a perfect example. We have done an amazing job as a town and as a community, and all of that has just been people, different, different managers have picked it up and made sure that their departments took care of whatever we needed. And that is, that, that's no way to, to run a town. I, you know, I, I think at some point, we will completely run out of capacity if we, if we haven't already, so.
Thank you, Jean.
The last, the last question I had was just, so we're going to take it out of surplus now, and then in the future, we would put it into the budget?
Well, what, what, what happened is, is last year, coming into FY21, the year we're in, we budgeted these funds anticipating their use. The use did not materialize, the demand did not materialize, but we didn't know that until as we came down to the end of this fiscal year. So, when we did our budget last year for FY22, we also budgeted a similar amount of money. So, in FY22, we will not have to increase our budget. And I suspect that going forward into FY23, if all of the funds we have budgeted are not scheduled to be utilized for this position, we may be able to either reallocate those funds for something else, or perhaps reduce any potential impact in, in our budgets in the, in FY23. So, this will, this will be absorbed into the current budget. There'll be no need to raise taxes to do this, even in the future years.
Great.
Gary, is that, does that answer all your questions?
Right now.
Okay. All right, I'll come back to you. You're up next.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that in, in a lot of my discussions around town about this, I've just really, I, I don't think a lot of folks have a, a real idea of how much of this type of work needs to be done in this day and age, and that with the advancements in technology and communication and so forth, it's only going to balloon even more, and it just doesn't make sense to keep laying it on other folks who have other work to do. And and it also allows, by centralizing it, i- i- it provides for a single voice and also for some accountability. So, I think it's just, I think I really like this new, the changes that Stu made on this, and I encourage everyone to vote yes. Thank you. Jeanie, you're muted.
Sorry. Jim, and then Jean.
Thank you. I'll tell you why I support this. And I think it's a good idea. It ain't cheap, and I wish I could apply for it myself, but I don't think I'd necessarily be that good at it. But, you know, you all know that I have fielded some of the most scurrilous, ridiculous claims that have been put out there about the town of Bennington, different projects. And this is an opportunity for us to lay out the facts, where the funding comes from, who's responsible for it, and just put all that stuff to rest. I, I don't know about you guys, but I hear it a lot, and I'm not very fond of it. That's it.
Thank you, Jim. Jean, you're up.
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback on what Tom just said. You know, every time a, a staff member is asked to do something on the website, like he, like Tom said, you know, something else that they needed to do gets put on hold. So, the whole, the whole thing just keeps getting slowed down over and over and over again, and you know, imagine what it would be like to have someone on staff where this is their skill set. This is what they do. This is what they possibly went to college for. This is what they love to do. You know, I have a hunch that a lot of people that are managing the website don't really want to manage the website, and that's not where their skills are. That's not what they were hired to do. So, I, I think it just makes total sense in every way to, to hire someone specifically for this, for this position.
Thank you, Jean.
Yep.
Um, I'm just looking. Sarah, I haven't heard from you. Do you have, do you want to add anything to this conversation?
You had a feeling, huh?
No, I just want to, well, everyone else has weighed in, so.
Yes, no, I do, but I think you had a good feeling. Yeah, so, um, I, I see this position as being helpful, but I also see, I, I don't feel that it should come from the rec center budget. And I also think that, my feeling is that it could be a job share or, or a part-time position. That's, that's just how I'm feeling right now. I do think it would be a beneficial position, but I don't think it needs to be a full-time position for one person.
So, Stu, do you want to address again, the, this is not coming from the rec center budget?
Well, I mean, technically, the funds are currently in the rec center budget. They were budgeted for operating supplies, but, but the use of those funds has not materialized. So, if you folks approve this position, when we move into FY22, the funds that we will use to fund this position will move into the Community Development Department and be shown there as an additional personnel in that department. The funds for upgrading the website will also be moved into the Community Development Department and, and be shown there. So, what you will see is a reduction in the Recreation Department total budget, but it does not reduce any of the needs that we have for our facilities, which are the parks and the Recreation Center itself, nor does it reduce the needs of our MOU or memorandum of understanding with the Y. These are funds that are simply, and you will see it at the end of the, of the fiscal year, these were funds that are simply not used. And they'll move into our fund balance this year because we haven't used them, which is not a bad thing, because it will increase our fund balance, but next year, they will be reallocated, and you'll see that reallocation as soon as you give me permission to, to move forward with this.
And the penny for parks funding will also, will be in a, a new source of funding for?
Well, the pennies for parks will show up in a reserve. So, when that money is brought in via the, via our tax bills, that goes automatically into a reserve. We can, we draw on that with your approval when we have projects to present to you.
Such as Willow Park. Okay. Yes, Sarah.
So, I guess my feeling of not touching the rec center budget is that we're trying to grow their rec center and not touching that. I, I just, I, I don't feel good about that.
Except, except that it's a management agreement, that we're, we're, we're contracting with the YMCA to do that. And I don't know, Shannon, I don't know if you have any, if, if you would have any words of wisdom here.
Well, you know, we, we've talked with, with the Y. I think some of it is, you know, the way that we, and Stu can tell more about this, because he's been here a lot longer than I have. But we've changed the way that we do business, you know, the rec center. It used to be all town employees, and, and we were running everything, and now it's the Y. And so, it really, it has changed, you know, the needs that we have there for operating, administration, et cetera. And so, we're also in a growing experience with that relationship with the Y, so it sort of took some time to realize, oh, we actually have extra funds in this particular area. So, you know, but just speaking to the need, I mean, you know, I'm here at most meetings talking about all the community development and other grants that are coming in, and you know, I'm really, to be frank, in triage mode with this job, where it's like, okay, what can I let go? You know, do I let go of the state? Do I let go of the community need that's there? I mean, I, I just can't possibly do everything that is expected right now, and I think that having the support in communications is going to allow me to focus on my job, which is community development. So, I think it's essential.
Thank you, Shannon. Bruce, did you have your hand up, or did it go away?
I, I did. I, I'm, I'm cognizant of the hour. You know, let me just say to, to my colleague and friend that the money that we're, nobody's being taken from the rec center budget, because it was, it's sitting there not, not being utilized now at all. So, that's not, I mean, and, and that, this budget year is coming to an end. And it seems to me that it's important to recognize that, that nobody's getting, going to get short-changed. And, you know, luckily, you know, we get to look at the budget every single year. And so, in January, we will get to see how smart a decision this was, and we can, again, put in, but, you know, the worst, the worst thing to do in my mind, and I'll stop with this, is to go sort of have these, and sort of, sort of try. Partly because you cannot get the best person usually on a part-time job. You get the best candidate when you have a full-time job. We'll know relatively soon whether this was money well-spent. And for my friends out there in the community who say this isn't money well-spent, well, we'll all get to find out, and you can blame me for my vote if you want. But I think we should give this a full-fledged try, because God knows the communication skills needed are a full-time job. That's my view. Thanks.
So, would someone like to make a motion to authorize a new Communication Coordinator position for the town as proposed? Go for it, Bruce. Unmeet yourself.
I'm going to ask Tom Haley to do it.
So moved.
Second.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
All right, roll call vote. I, it's too late for me.
Aye.
Thank you, Bruce.
Aye.
Jim? Jim?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Gary. Sarah?
Nay, and I'd like to make a comment after that, too.
Okay, uh, Tom?
Aye.
Jeanie, aye. All right, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. So Sarah, your comment?
Yes, I, I do support this position. I would just like to see that it be a job share or a part-time.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, so rescinding the mask resolution should be fairly short because the governor already did it for us. So our mask resolution and amendment that we put in place last May and June for public health reasons had to do with employees, um, customers and visitors to businesses. Today with the governor's lifting of the emergency declaration, the resolution is now moot. Our last paragraph in both of the resolutions is that this order shall remain in effect until the select board resc- amends, rescinds, or suspends this order or until the governor declares an end to the COVID-19 state of emergency in Vermont, whichever happens first.
So the governor has declared the state of emergency is over. We don't need to take action.
Correct. So excellent. So.
And, and the town office has amended its, its opening policy effective tomorrow. So if you are vaccinated, you need not wear a mask in the building. If you are unvaccinated, we ask that you mask up coming in.
Excellent. Okay, so the next thing on here is boards and the commission, boards and commissions appointments. And we are really pleased to present this slate to the select board for the 2021 appointments to the town boards and commissions. The interview team was Jim, Tom, Jean, Bruce and me. And we were able to meet with 10 new candidates. And our community is so fortunate to have these talented and really dedicated people step up. Over half of the candidates were new to the community. One had just moved here in December. Um, and their reasons for moving to Bennington and the reasons for wanting to take part in town governance were really affirming and I think really made us all feel like we were really proud. We were really proud to be part of Bennington and the Bennington that they saw. So, um, do I have a motion to accept the slate of new members for appointments?
I'll move that.
I'll second it.
Wonderful. All right. So any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed, please say nay. Any abstentions? Nope? Great. Well, congratulations to everyone. Um, it was like they were great interviews. So let's move on to managers' report. I know you have a couple of things for us, Stu.
Yes, um, the first is not on my managers' report. Most of you should have received the, a packet with the hard copy of the water and sewer budgets, water resources budget presentation. We do need to set a work session. I don't, um, and you might be able to do that by communicating effectively with one another and then just giving me a date. My staff have all indicated that they would be, they would prefer an evening meeting during the week rather than a Saturday morning meeting. So we just need to do that. We don't need to do that necessarily tonight unless you folks have something in mind.
Well, Stu, are you looking at this week, next week?
Probably, it would probably be better next week because it's not a select board meeting week.
Okay. So I'll, so I'll send something out to everybody. We can do this.
That'd be great. That's fantastic.
Okay.
And then the only action item I have, uh, and I know there's some concern about this, but the Summer Home Brew Fest has asked, uh, and this is scheduled for Saturday, August 7th, by the way, uh, has asked to, uh, close a portion of Depot Street running from the bridge south to the entrance to the municipal lot for the purpose of organizing and presenting the Brew Fest on the vacant lot that was the Tuttles Lot and, and adjoining parking areas. As I said, I've checked with the chief of police. He doesn't see any problems there. I know, Bruce, you raised a concern about the blocking the driveway into the, into GBICs. Uh, I've seen some correspondence between, uh, the organizers and the new head of GBICs. They're, I guess they're getting together tomorrow to talk about it.
Yes, they, they've asked that we not, that we not, um, vote on that tonight.
That's fine. We'll, we'll have it on, uh, the 28th. That ends that. I, I don't see a reason to go into anything else we, unless you folks want to.
Well, I think we want to briefly, I think we want to briefly talk about our plan for our next meeting, which will be.
Okay, that, that was, I said, we're, we'll be meeting face to face.
We will. Um, so we will, we're not going to be masked, uh, per Trey's recommendation, but we will, we will have spacing, we will keep spacing between the tables, between select board members and also the public. So the chairs will be further apart than they normally are. We will have, um, we will have, uh, disinfectant and.
And masks.
Wipes and we'll have something to wipe down the mic in between people, people's comments. We will also, unless it terribly unbalances the, the firehouse, uh, system, open the window so that we have more ventilation. So we will do what we can do to keep it safe. We will also maintain the, um, Zoom link so that if people prefer to call in rather than come to the meeting, they can do that as well.
We'll also have masks, uh, at the table as you enter the facility. For those folks who, who are not vaccinated, they will need to be masked when they come to the meeting.
And so if, if someone is not vaccinated and they do not want to wear a mask, then they should plan to call in if they want to make a comment or, and, and certainly Cat TV will be covering it. So you can always watch the meeting. Okay, Jean?
Um, it, it's so, so we'll be spaced out as the select board and the, the community members that attend will also be spaced out. Is that what she said? Okay. So that seems to me that, um, we'll have a capacity limit on how many people, not that we're expecting a huge crowd, but we probably would need to be aware that we will reach capacity, you know, much sooner than we normally would. And Shannon, Shannon, Shannon's still on the call. I have a question on Franklin Lane, Shannon. It says improvements will begin in the spring. Is that 2022?
Uh, well, now they'll begin in the summer. That's 2021.
It's 2021.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just failed to change it to summer in the, in my report. But yeah, things are moving ahead. The design work is done and, and, um, you know, we're working with MSK and their, and with town staff.
Okay.
They're going to be getting started soon.
Okay, great. I wasn't sure if it got pushed off to 2022.
Great. All right. And Jim, you have a question? Comment?
Yes, it's about our upcoming meeting. When will be in person? Will there be any sort of barriers like plexiglass barriers around folks who just have refused to be vaccinated and want to wear a mask? And what kind of enforcement can we expect, uh, with those folks who just absolutely refuse?
Well, so Trey and I did talk about that a bit this morning and, um, because, uh, there is really no, we're working on the honor system. You know, what we can, what we, I think what we can ask is if you are not vaccinated, you need to wear a mask. And if you are not willing to wear a mask, then you should watch from home and call in. So, you know, that's, that's really what we can do. But we will make the spacing such that people have a, have a, you know, hopefully a level of comfort. It, it's not perfect, Jim.
Yeah. Uh, so you know, as far as enforcement goes, for those people who refuse, what are you going to do?
Then they're going to be in, they're going to be in the room, which is why I think we want to make sure that we keep proper spacing and we also have as much airflow as we possibly can. Um, I think Trey's comment, one of Trey's comments was that, uh, because vaccination rates are high in the community, that the people who are most at risk, uh, by coming to a meeting and they're not vaccinated are the unvaccinated individuals. That, that individuals that are vaccinated, um, with rare exception, if they have had any, they've, they've generally been asymptomatic if they have, um, had COVID after being vaccinated. But it's also a very, very small number of people who develop COVID after being vaccinated. So the people at highest risk are the people that will be unvaccinated. So I am hoping that they will choose to either wear a mask or, um, or call in.
And, and I should add, Jeanie, and, and we've, we've probably all forgotten, it's been so long since we've met in person. But we, we have had, uh, law enforcement presence at our meetings, uh, up until we stopped meeting in that fashion. Just because of some of the threats that are out there about people disrupting, uh, our meetings and, and with unruly behavior.
Thank you. All right. Anything else in the managers' report?
That's all I've got tonight.
All right. So upcoming agenda, Jean, help me make sure I got everything here. We have the Better Bennington Corporation work plans and budget. We have to set the water and sewer rates. We have the first reading of the redrafted care and control of animals policy. We have a second reading on the collaboration policy and, um, Gary and Jim and Sarah, are you, uh, we might have sidewalk materials update from your subcommittee? Is that possible?
We are meeting with RJ tomorrow.
Okay. All right. So, so that's a possibility. I mean, always, this agenda is always a work in progress. Anything else that we know we should be paying attention to on the agenda for next meeting?
I think, I think you've got everything that I've got.
Okay. Okay, that's great. All right. So other business. Just go down the line. You, you, you know where you are in the alphabet. I give up. Um, Bruce?
Very quickly, just a reminder to everybody that you can still get fluorescent number, uh, home numbers, uh, by calling the fire department. The Bennington Fire Department. Call them, get them. They're three bucks a number.
Excellent. Jean, you're next on my screen. I give up.
I have those numbers on my house and they're amazing. They really do work. I just wanted to, um, make sure everyone saw in the paper that our Curtis Reed received an honorary degree from Middlebury for his work in civil rights in Vermont. And they quoted, he is a champion of equity and inclusion. And he, um, in case people don't know, he's been a consultant of ours for, geez, probably going on two years now. And he is the executive director of Vermont Partnership for Fairness and Diversity. But to us, he's our Curtis.
Thank you, G. Tom, you're up.
Uh, yeah, I was just, uh, anyone that has followed Cat TV's, uh, Facebook page would have seen today that, I don't remember if they were nominated or if they won an unsung heroes award for their work during COVID. And I would just like to express appreciation for the work that they have done to allow these meetings to continue to go out to the public. I'm sure often making it up as you go, um, in these unprecedented times. And Josh, good work and convey that from the rest, to the rest of the folks from me, please. Thank you. You are truly unsung heroes on this one.
Thank you, Tom. That was great. Um, Jim, you're up.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to, uh, bring up an observation that I have made over the last, you know, week or so. And it's about that terrible, awful, very bad thing that is the splash pad. Um, I went by several times, spoke to parents and kids there and watched these kids just having a blast. The town through Mark Sawyer and his crew have completed fencing around, um, the splash pad. And, um, you know, it was just, you know, i- i- if you haven't, if you're not familiar how it works, for a few minutes, the splash pad, uh, fires, uh, the, the pistons or the water jets, and they fire randomly. And then there's a 10-second pause and the kids waiting eager anticipation to see which jets will fire next. And when the jets do fire, there's a chorus of squeals and laughters and smiles on the faces of parents. So I, you know, I, I think this is going to be great for the downtown. It is great for the downtown.
Absolutely, and grandparents as well.
Well, sorry to leave you out.
Stuart, you're up.
Yes, just one last comment. Um, does anyone remember the words to the kinks? This could be the last time.
You referring to the pandemic? Oh, yes, that's great. All right. And, and for everyone that was able to go to the first splash pad event, Soul Steps was fantastic. The, um, the Arts Exchange Band was great. And the enter, and, and the flow dancer was great. Yeah, it was a wonderful evening, wonderful evening. So I want to thank Cat TV for staying with us for three and a half hours. And for the public, um, for everyone that, that, uh, commented or watched us this evening or in the future, we wish you good night and I will entertain a motion.
Sarah's got her hand up.
Sarah's got her hand up.
Sarah, oh gosh, it's in that picture again. Sarah, go for it.
Yeah, so, um, actually that was a good segue. Um, just wanted to say something briefly, but, uh, yeah, that's where I was going. Just wanted to encourage everyone next meeting to be gentle with one another. And with that, um, motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed abstentions? All right, good night.
Good night, everyone. Good night, everyone. Thank you. I can't wait to see y'all in person.